Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, December 15th, 2021. Welcome, and what a great city we live in, and how excited we are for the holidays and everyone to be here today. So, I would like to call up the invocation by Don Steriano, Kingdom Life Church, Christian Church, and thank you for being here.
Would you stand, please? Good morning. Do bear your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, I pray for each city leader that your abundant blessings were to be upon of every area of their lives, their families. Protect them and guide them, strengthen them and keep them, and remind each of them that they're loved, significant, needed, honored, and made in your image. I also declare over this city, every precious employee the same. I pray for today's meeting that wisdom would be their rudder, your will would be their compass, and their love for the city and the people would be the fuel that propels them to the destinations of their decisions. I pray where there's diversity in opinion, the spirit of unity, honor, kindness, compassion would be championed. I pray that our minds would be renewed to all that is true and noble and reputable, authentic, compelling, the gracious, the best and not the worst, the beautiful and not the ugly, things to praise, not things to curse, that you, Lord, who makes everything work together, would work us all into your most excellent harmonies. I pray for your glorious kingdom to come and your perfect will to be done in the city of Bradenton as it is in heaven, in Jesus' name. Amen.
And before we start the pledge, I would like to have a moment of silence for all those through the middle part of our country that are having tornado issues and the devastation that that caused last weekend, and for the families of those children and all the adults. So let's have a moment of silence for them and do what we can. At this time, if you'll join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This time, we'll call the meeting to order. Mrs. Melton?
We have one proclamation today and also a music video to play. Would you like the proclamation read first?
Yes, read the proclamation and we'll play the video.
Realize Bradenton's Love This City Bradenton Campaign, October 2021 to May 2022. Whereas, we love this city Bradenton because it's the friendly city with a unique mix of assets that distinguish us from other communities, arts, culture, heritage, sports, and an array of chef-driven restaurants, public parks, and events that bring people together. And whereas, we join with Realize Bradenton's eight-month campaign to activate community and business engagement in the downtown Bradenton core, Village of the Arts, and Old Manatee through events, graphics, scavenger hunts with prizes, holiday gift guide, a love poem to the city, and a music video and. Whereas, the music video, Our Fair City, written by Matt Burke and performed by the band Well Have Gun Will Travel, is a centerpiece of the Love This City Bradenton campaign. We agree with the chorus of our fair city song, "Here's our fair city, here's to you and me. We're gonna write this city's future history." And whereas, Matt Burke, a lifelong Bradenton resident, born in Manatee Memorial Hospital and a graduate of Bay Shore High, is the guitarist and vocalist of nationally-known band Have Gun Will Travel, and is appreciated for the band's positive face to local, regional, and national audiences as amplified in our fair city song. And whereas, we appreciate the funding for the Love This City Bradenton campaign from the Knight Donor Advised Fund at the Manatee Community Foundation. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim our support for the eight-month Love This City Bradenton campaign and proudly award the key of the city of Bradenton to Matt Burke and Have Gun Will Travel for shining light on our fair city. Signed, Mayor Jean Brown.
Thank you, and if we could play the song? Thank you, and one of the things that hits you when it's even at the end, it says, "Here's to our fair city to write our future history," and that's one of the things we do up here every day and as a council. Obviously, you know, we sometimes differ on things the way we do it, but you know what? We're writing this future's history, and we're gonna make sure that we do it right for all of us and, you know, for the generations to come. And what we've done in the past is great, and I think that we've got a lot of positive going forward. And, you know, all of us love this city, and we're gonna keep going forward, and we're gonna write the future history. So we appreciate those great and kind words. What I'm gonna do before we get everybody up and do a couple of other things, I'm gonna ask Susie Bowie to come forward and say a few words. Obviously, funding comes from a lot of different ways. The CRA does a great job in giving for Realize Bradenton, but the Community Foundation has done so many great things for our whole county and our city, and we appreciate what you do. So if you can give us a few good words, then we appreciate what you do.
Thank you so much, Mayor Brown. So let's stand up and see your t-shirt. Who's wearing the t-shirt today? Mary Ann, I think you get the best dressed award for the red that you have. Pam? Okay, awesome. Got a lot of people wearing the t-shirt out there, and I hear... Okay, you got your button. All right. I hear from Andrea that if you go to Realize Bradenton's website and you complete a scavenger hunt, then you too will be eligible to get a t-shirt, right? So, super exciting. I want to thank all of you. I certainly love this city. I'm very proud to work here and to see all of the amazing things that happen in the city of Bradenton. Who else has a music video and a song dedicated to the city? So I want to thank Jonette Aishem and her entire staff at Realize Bradenton. The things that they make possible in this community are truly outstanding. They are also seen as national leaders in many ways for what they've done in this city. I want to thank the Community Redevelopment Agency and certainly the city of Bradenton. We are all stronger when we work together, so it's amazing to see what can happen. To me, the future of the city is banking on what we have done currently, which is engage people, inform people, make sure that all of our citizens are part of our decision-making, and we consider all of the diverse opinions that we have in our city when we look forward. So I want to thank everybody for the possibility that they infuse in what's happening today and tomorrow. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and I love this city, so thank you.
Thank you. Great job. All right, so if I can ask the council at this time, we'll all walk around in front of the podium there, and we can get Matt Burke and his group up and do a great job. Thank you. I think that that song, as you really listen to it, it really hits a lot of key points of our city, and that's what I think the intent was. And I think that if we want it to go viral, get it on YouTube and get a million hits, it'd be good for our city, so we'd bring people to us. All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
If we could put it out on our website on Facebook, I'll start shooting out, too.
Okay, we can split it up. All right. Mrs. Melton, any presentations?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to citizen comment. Let me see here. All right, citizen comments will be taken at this time. They're on non-agenda items. So if... Got Mike Mahan first. I know you waited a while back and had to leave, I think, a meeting or two ago, so sorry about that. We appreciate you coming back.
(mimicking voice) I don't know if the commission or the city council or the people in the audience have seen some goofy guy out on the causeway in a golf cart picking up litter. That's me. I've been doing it since 2016, and it's a picture of me in my golf cart right up by the sign for Me and Family and Friends. Since 2016, I've logged about 500 hours of volunteer service on the causeway, picking up litter. I just counted out this morning, I've been out there 42 times this year, picking up litter from the entrance to the causeway, out to the second bridge, and then coming back down. I've been recognized by a variety of groups for my efforts on behalf of the causeway. There's an award I got from Keep Manatee Beautiful a few years ago. Department of Transportation recognized me in 2019 for 300 volunteer hours on 2019, and our very own city of Bradenton recognized me back in 2019 for my efforts on behalf A few years ago, it was just me and a bag and my litter picker, and I was walking the causeway. I wasn't getting as much litter picked up as I wanted to, so I bought a golf cart, and that allowed me to extend my range out to the second bridge and also go over on the boat ramp side of the causeway, and also to pick up larger items. Probably the most unusual item that I picked up in the last five years was two boxes of dead chickens. Two boxes of dead chickens. I've reported motor oil, abandoned cars, hundreds of pounds of palm fronds that just fall off the palm trees, I picked them up. So I have now incurred a cost to provide this service, and that's why I'm here this morning, to ask for any degree of financial support you would care to lend to my efforts. I intend to keep doing this. In fact, I'll probably be out there this afternoon. This is an invoice for the golf cart, which I bought back in 2019. It was for $4,000, and the cart is primarily used for that purpose, which is to pick up the litter on the causeway. Just this past year, I had to replace the motor on the golf cart, and that was another $1,000. But I'm really dedicated to this proposition, and I would just like to keep doing it as long as I'm physically able to. These are the two invoices from the caddy repair shop, golf cart caddy repair shop, for about $1,000. The tires on my golf cart are starting to get pretty worn out, so I imagine next year I'm gonna have another large expenditure. So I'm here to just let you know about what I'm doing out there, to ask for, as I said, any degree of support you want to give. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for your time. Mike, we'll look into it and get with our administrator and attorney and kind of go forward from there. Thank you.
Mike?
All right, at this time, I believe it's Kimla Morell.
He is, yes.
Thank you. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
All right. My name is Kimla Morell, and I love this city. Hey, beautiful city of Bradenton. And right down from where the Village of Arts is, is 12th Avenue West. 12th Avenue West is a hotspot for drug dealers, a lot's going on there. I've called police, I've called Bradenton Police. They have some efforts, but it hasn't been enough. Now we have the drug dealers sitting out camping all night. I have people coming through in our great city, and I'm so happy that you guys are willing to do what needs to be done. So I'm asking Bradenton Police Department, I've called the sheriff. The citizens that live there are afraid because you got these younger people, and they just say what they want. The thing is, they're not policing enough. The police hardly ever come through. If they come through, they won't be so bold to sit there and sell crack like Big Macs. They're meeting McDonald's with billions served, the way they're serving crack over here. So in this great city, I'm asking for help. We are asking. I want my grandson, when he goes outside, to be safe. I want my granddaughter. I want the children in the neighborhood. I own a group home there, and I moved it because they're at risk, and when you walk outside, you got everything right at your fingertips. So I'm asking the city of Bradenton, please, and if you don't believe that it is a hotspot or a terrible, where there's a lot of activity going on, I want to remind you of four victims that were murdered, 5th and 9th Street, between 5th and 9th Street and 12th Avenue. Zori Jenkins, Daquan Randolph, Kivis McCullough, Jamie Singleton, all 12th Avenue between 5th and 9th over the last few, over the years. So please, help us, please. They're there all night long, selling drugs. They're there all night long. There were shootings. There've been shootings that have been reported and haven't been reported. There's a neighbor that just moved in, her and her family, her two daughters, her son, her husband. They're afraid to say anything, and everybody is right there camping out. Bradenton Police Department, I've called. I've wanted to meet with the chief, whoever. I am crying out to this great city to help, please.
Okay, and we've got Deputy Chief Kramer in the back, so I mean, can you go, he'll go talk with you now and try to work some things out?
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, ma'am, hold up. I have your same concerns, and I've talked to the chief about this as long as two years ago. And I think this needs brought to our attention better, and I appreciate you coming in, because we've had a lot of drug dealings and killings in that area, and I agree with you, I don't think it's... We've stepped up to the plate for looking at that. I'd like to see it be an item on the police review board for the next police review board, and I don't know when that is.
It's February, March, I think?
That's not soon enough for me, but I'd certainly like to have that on there, and you can come to that board and make a presentation, and then they can make a recommendation to the police chief and the forces to do something. And I'd like to have a couple minutes, if you will, with our deputy chief here, because I don't think, I think you deserve a couple minutes of their time to be explained to why or what is not happening.
And also, sometimes things are happening that behind the scenes that we don't know. So I think some of it might be better to work together with Deputy Chief Kramer. Yes, he can address a couple of things.
I've lived there since 2006, and I keep talking, I keep saying things, and little things are being done, but just policing, just coming through. If they see your presence, they not gonna hang out like that. So that's one of my...
And I'll be happy to talk to you in a few moments. I just wanted to let you and the council and everyone assembled. I believe you were copied on a press release that was put out late last week, or maybe first of this week, that involved, I believe we made at least 11 arrests with more pending. It was specifically targeting a long-term drug investigation in that neighborhood. If you receive the release, and I'll show it to you here shortly, it's a lot of the names you probably recognize.
Oh, I heard of it, yes. Thank you.
With more, as I said, more arrests to come, but it's specifically in that area that Lee is talking about. So I just want to let you all know that it is being currently addressed. We'll certainly be happy to talk about it more in February, but right now, that's, we're doing what we're doing.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have, thank you. We have one other citizen comment that I know she loves children, and at this time, behind her is a bunch of children that are gonna come in and sing, so, Mrs. Rhodes, if you would indulge me, let me have them sing first and then you go, would that be okay? I've known you since I was a child, so I figured you'll let me have that indulgence. So we'll bring up the St. Stevens Choir here today, and I don't know if we've got a famous artist in the room, so maybe he's gonna need some backup singers soon, so don't get nervous.[1436.11][1436.11](laughter) We'll get some singing there.
Mayor, Councilman, thank you for letting us sing for y'all this morning. These are our second, third grade Christian singing group from St. Stevens, and we're excited just to spread some Christmas cheer here in the room for everyone who's here. Thank you for all that you do for the city of Bradenton.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, if we could have the children turn around, because the cameras are that way, and, you know, we can go down there for them if we want to, but...
Can squeeze in, yeah.
Squeeze in.
And squeeze together a little bit so we can get them all on the TV.
Condense.
Yep. You have to act like you like each other.
Get to the middle.
Closer.
A boy and a girl?
Second grade, take step forward.
And now squish.
There you go.
Yeah.
Two of a grade, that's good.
Right? They listen.
Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, how lovely are your branches? Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, how lovely are your branches? Everyone's summer days are bright, everyone's winter skies white. Oh, Christmas tree, oh, Christmas tree, how lovely are your branches? Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh, oh, the fields we go, laughing all the way, ha, 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 the sound that's telling, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey! Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh, hey!
Before we go, before we go, I'd like to ask the council to go and stand kind of behind him and get a picture with him.
No, that's so I get the immunity.
Santa Claus.
Santa Claus.
Hang on, we got lots of pictures. There we go. There we go.
Great job.
Awesome job.
Good job.
George, he good. Bye, see ya.
Thanks, y'all. Merry Christmas.
All right, Ms. Melton, we'll get back to citizen comment. Mrs. Betty Sales Rhodes. Come on down. That's a hard act to follow.
Oh, she got this.
I know. I've known it since I was about 16 years old, so...
14.
14. I always give it a little bit.
Good morning, city of Bradenton, and to Mayor Brown, you're doing a wonderful job here, and I'd like to thank Mr. Sanders and the other staff member for what you all did last Saturday, for some kids, you know, for toys and everything, and that was very nice. But you know, the only time I come up here that, is I have a question that be puzzling me that I hear a C. Now, I know the young lady just came up here and saying about the drugs on 12th, but my problem is this. When they go on 12th, do they know how to treat a minority person? Not like they're a dog or anything. See, I got the call, yes, some people went to jail, but they called and asked me a question, could a police officer see you riding by and just throw you off the bike? You know, and handcuff you and everything. So I say, I don't know, I say, but I come up here and ask the commission of the police department, and maybe I have some answer. And plus, I know about you all just because you know a very smart Mayor Brown. And plus, I know about you all just because you know a very smart Mayor Brown. That you all can go and get a warrant, a E-signer here in Manatee County for the city of Brayton without the judge signing it. But I went back and looked at the statute that if a felony is being committed in that neighborhood, a judge has to sign a felony. But somebody showed me the warrant and I say, well, it's electronic sign. I say, I don't know. Then someone was telling me that when they went in the house for the search warrant, they popped some and broke the lady's window. I say, a search warrant is in the house, not for a car. So that's damaged. Then, um, they told me to walk through. I don't deal in drugs and I don't do no drugs, never have. But I'm just saying, it's a way that you have to be respectful for. That's what everybody, white or black, when you're coming in to arrest someone for dealing in drugs or whatever. You should respect them because one thing they got to know, you haven't been charged. You've been charged, but they haven't found you guilty. So you go in a house, you understand, you're supposed to treat the house with respect. And I walked through it in some kind of way. I just fem it is how they tore up. I don't know what they were looking for. But I know one thing, uh, Mayor, you got some devious police officer. Because something they wrote on there is unfounded and untrue. Just to get them the E-signers. So maybe they need to be trained more with the chief in what they're doing when they go in somebody's house. And that's the only thing. It just puzzled me because I get calls and I don't know.
All right, yeah, Assistant Chief Kramer, you have just one second, Mr. Sanders. And obviously, you know, he can talk with you out there, get specifics maybe on some parts of it. But obviously, everyone is innocent until proven guilty.
That's what I'm trying to say.
From top to bottom, no matter where you're at.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's important.
Oh, and another thing, I say one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
It was funny, the 11 or 12 people they arrested, they didn't take them inside the, um, the building. They had them out there sitting for nine hours in the sun in a chair. Before they transformed to Fort Manatee and they get to Fort Manatee till about 5:00 or 6:30. From 5:30 in the morning to then. But I'm just saying, I don't deal in drugs, I don't do nothing wrong.
And I know that.
Yes.
I know that.
But I'm just saying, I'm a person, I don't care if you're black or white. If I think you treated wrong, I'm gonna come up here and ask. And you all know, I don't come up here unless there's something I have to ask. But y'all doing a good job. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Ma'am, ma'am, Ms. Rhodes, I appreciate you coming in. And I'd ask again if the Assistant Chief would give you a personal invite with the other lady for the February review, police review board to voice your concerns there. Because that's what that board is supposed to be for.
Yes.
So, uh, and you can get into some details and get your time slotted, be on the agenda. I ask that you do that and so that we utilize that police board for what it's supposed to be for.
And you've made a lot of kids happy because the parents who talk about it when they say it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. See ya. Merry Christmas. All right, is there any other citizen comment on non-agenda items before we move forward? Hearing none, Mrs. Melton.
We are asking approval of the consent agenda, items A through S.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roth.
I would like to pull, um, item Q.
Q?
I agree. I'd like to pull item D.
I'm sorry?
D and Q.
D is in...
D is in dog.
Thank you.
Q is in, I don't know.
Question.
Question. We got a question.
So, um, is, can one of you make a motion?
Uh, and move to approve the consent agenda lacking items D and Q.
Second.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda except for D and Q being pulled, second by...
Oh, she gets it, that's a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we also pull O?
O.
Move to amend the motion to include item O.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Roth to pull D, O, and Q. Is that, and is that second?
No, yeah. Second's, second's still seconding.
Second's still good. All right, so that motion, and we'll start the vote in Ward 2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
And 1?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Roth?
Um, well, my item was last, but I'll take it now. Uh, I just wanted to point out, this is the, um, this is the authorization for, um, awarding a contract for the sidewalk, um, program that we, uh, we bumped up the, uh, this program from 75,000 to 750,000. This is something I've been kind of harping on for about 10 years, that our sidewalks are in horrible shape. So we're in the right direction. I'm very, very happy that we went with three, uh, three bidders. So I think we'll get the work done quicker. There's a lot of work to do out there. And I just wanted to point out that, um, this has been in need for a long time. These sidewalks probably go way past Bill Evers' time in office. And, uh...
They could go back to Sterling Hall.
They do, yes. And this is not gonna get the job done. So I'm just pointing this out. I've got one more year on this board and I'll probably be asking for this amount to be increased next year. But, uh, you know, I just want to point out to y'all that this is gonna be an ongoing thing. We, this is how we started, the road repaving program. And it just grew and mushroomed. And it's basically taking the money out into the neighborhoods where they see it. So this is, you know, because so much of our efforts are done in, uh, you know, central part of the city, the downtown area, that it's always nice to get it out into the neighborhoods. So I, I'm very much supportive of this. And, uh, I'm happy to, uh, make the motion to get this approved. And, and, and please, when I'm, when I'm sitting on that side of the DS, uh, keep this thing going.
Okay, so that's a motion and a second to approve Q as written? Any further discussion?
Yes. Mr. McClellan, if you could approach the podium. These three contractors you've all approved, there's a difference in the price. Are you, are you gonna average them? Are you gonna, I mean, one would not be happy if they found out what the other one was, even though they're 10% apart.
No, the methodology here is that, um, we'll be issuing work orders for different areas within the city. And I'll be happy to share with council. We have maps made out of where we would like to try and spread it around.
Right, that was my next question, because I didn't see that attached.
Well, but that's not part of this. This is, this is just the contract to have them onboard to do the work.
Okay.
Once we start issuing work orders, um, that, that, that happens under this contract. So there'll be individual work orders. And the idea of having three onboard is to give us the flexibility that says if we want, if we need a particular area done, and somebody says, well, I don't have the staff to work on it for six months or three months, we would go to the next one in line. So it's not a guarantee that any of them get any work. It's, we, our, gives us the flexibility to be able to do things on our schedule as much as possible.
So you're asking for the cap at 750?
You've already approved the 750.
750, but these three together are more than that. Are you asking for more or are you just asking for up to that?
No, the, these are unit prices that they have given us. So when they bid the project, we gave them, here's a typical work order, what it might be. And they've given us those numbers. The actual work orders will be very specific to the various areas within the city that we have assignments to give them.
Okay, and, and the, uh, distribution of it, you'll have in a summary report in your weekly...
I'll probably issue it separately because there's multiple maps that we've got prepared that, you know, designate particular areas. So it might say, here's this neighborhood and here's all the streets that we're including as part of this.
And is that done based on need or based on just equity of, of different wards?
It is based upon, first, need in terms of our evaluation. So when we evaluated the, we, we looked at all the sidewalks and said, how many panels are cracked? How many panels have a trip hazard? And then we applied factors such as, is it on a, um, a school route, a walking route to school? Is it near a hospital? Is it near? So there were several factors that were built into creating a rating system to say, here's where it is. And then as best as possible, we tried to distribute it amongst the wards.
Right.
To get equal distribution.
Okay.
And I'll be happy to share that with you once we've got this finalized.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll start the vote to approve Q in Ward 3?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Let's go to D now, Mr. Sanders.
Uh, D is the piggyback agreement with, uh, the fiber install from City Hall to Public Works and Fire Station 1. That has been doubled, almost doubled, since we originally approved it. And I think, I thought we ought to spend a couple of minutes on, I understand the logistics of why it's, it, it's doubled. But now that it's doubled, is that still something that we feel is, I, I understand the necessity for it, but are, we're gonna replace Fire Station 1. Is that, is that as highest priority for that almost $100,000?
Well, Fire Station 1 isn't being replaced.
I mean, yeah.
Right, so 1 will always be there.
2, right.
Uh, Mayor Counselor, Mike Terasiano is here to talk on behalf of IT to tell you a little bit about the background of this project and also the structure as it relates to the pricing proposal before us. Of course, there's individuals from fire department to talk about programmatic issues beyond that. Mike?
Good morning. So when we first received the go-ahead to do this project, um, we started working with Public Works engineering staff. And we identified that because, because of how densely populated the right-of-way is coming down 9th Street West, the two vendors that we were gonna move forward with, we became, um, not comfortable with utilizing them and their experience. We engaged with the state of Florida. We found a vendor that is on a national consortium for the pricing. Um, and that's where the increase came from. This vendor, um, is currently working at Sarasota International Airport in Tampa. And they've also done a fiber ring for the city of Clearwater. So Jim and staff felt that, that they were most comfortable moving forward in this fashion. Um, and that's kind of why we're at where we're at.
Yeah, I understand that and I agree with you. But, uh, price in doubling and in, uh, what do we do for the new fire station? Are we gonna just deal with that later? That, that's something that needs to be considered, maybe not now, but later. That's, I meant to say, that's, that the new fire station, not one. And what's our, what's our long-term plan on for the public utilities? I mean, I don't like to put something in there and then if we got something in the works to change the location, because I've heard rumors of the, of the location. So why would we spend that kind of money if we're gonna change that location? If we're gonna change that location in the near future? I don't know what our plan is. I don't want, you know, for that.
For which, which location?
The public works.
For public works. So we, the, we have built into this project enough slack, if you will, in the fiber to be able to go across 9th Street West if the Public Works project does become...
Moves over to the other side.
Correct. So the vendor has given us enough, enough fiber in the ground. And we will have conduit going to both sides of the street in preparation for what you're...
And would that be connectivity over to the new fire station over, uh, would it come off of that or that have to be a whole new thing?
The new fire station out east?
Yes.
Um, no, this, that would, that, that's not a part of this project. We're talking about Fire Station 1, right here in the downtown corridor.
Is Fire Station, the other fire station is under construction now? Is it linked?
Uh, no, it is not. That is all leased fiber through Spectrum or Frontier or another carrier. Trying to, we, we had originally a few years ago talked about doing that, um, but that was, the price was astronomical.
Ju- just so council, counselor understands, it, it is linked, but it's linked through leased fiber.
Correct.
It's not within our network. This is an internal, citywide, uh, pipeline of our network.
Correct, yeah, we would own the utility, yeah. Instead of leasing Spectrum or otherwise.
Cost-wise, why couldn't we link this?
Oh, you can. You, you, we could use linked it. Uh, unfortunately, it becomes one of those things about, you know, cost recovery. We better off having our own network. And of course, that network serves a whole multitude of purposes. Public Works is out there and, and a host of other entities and the like. But let me let Jim maybe delve into the specifics of that.
To, to explain why we're doing this differently than any of the others with a leased fiber, we're currently connected with the leased fiber at Public Works. The problem is, because we share that fiber line with all the other users, we run into traffic issues as far as data transfer on that line. And that has actually resulted in issues associated with us being able to monitor and control our systems that we utilize this system for. Going to our own fiber optic system dedicated to just us eliminates that need and that data transfer will continuously occur unrestricted. That's the purpose for this.
How many people do you have on that data? That's how many people's using it, other than the fire?
It's city, it's anybody in the city who is connected to, uh, the Spectrum fiber system. So we're, we're, we're just somebody on the system with everybody else. So this, this isolates us and the fire station so that we don't have to worry about sharing the load and being, having basically unrestricted growth moving forward. And as Mike said, we're building into the project knowing full well that within two years, where you plan to be on the opposite side of 9th Street with a new Public Works annex, that would be part of this.
Yeah, I want to make sure that that was...
Absolutely.
Put in there connectivity or...
Absolutely.
Or actually probably run it, go ahead and run it, I assume.
Correct.
It, it's also a pretty common activity that's occurring throughout local government and a lot of municipalities where centralized locations will be on dedicated citywide fiber lines in the network that we have. We save ultimately some money in the long run. We have more sustainability in the event of high bandwidth use, disasters, things like that. And there's a whole lot of adjunct benefits to it. The other option is to lease the space, but as Mr. McClellan and, and Mike have pointed out, issues come up with that.
The other, as, as Mr. Perry referred, there is cost savings because we are, between the fire station and Public Works, we're currently spending $24,000, $24,000 a year for that lease on the existing fiber.
So they've written in contingencies to make sure that we're looking forward if, as things adjust and going. So good, good questions. And, and I think though, you know, I think though, for all of us up here, you know, I would assume that, and for me, I know Ms. Sanders already said and others, but it was sticker shock when you saw the one to the next, so that's a good question.
Well, I wasn't happy about it, let's put it that way. But, but, but the reality is, the contractors that were gonna be used before, one, we didn't necessarily have an actual contract with them. So from a procurement standpoint, it wasn't the right thing to do. And then when we investigated and found out they weren't even necessarily licensed as a contractor in the state of Florida, red flags went up, like, I don't want the, if they hit something, good God, what happened, so.
Did we not vet them through the RFQ process?
That was, that was stuff that had been done through, um, through IT as far as selecting people that they had used. So they just got a price from them. And we, we used that price in terms of, of coming before council initially, but...
The answer is no.
The answer is no, yeah. That's, that's why this came about, because Public Works, you know, purchasing was part of Public Works to start with. So, you know, we know the procedures and we were gonna follow them.
For the record, I think stuff like this shouldn't be on a consent agenda.
That's fine.
All right, so Mr. Sanders, do you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve it.
D? Okay, a motion to approve D of the consent agenda. Second by Mr. Roth. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?
Yes.
Carries unanimously, thank you. Mrs. Coachman?
Thank you. I just wanted, this is for clarification. I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to Music in the Park. Uh, and it's kind of a personal thing, but I'm sure everybody else is. Also, if you witnessed the Blues Festival, you know Music in the Park is gonna be awesome as well. But my, my question is, and I, I see no financial impact and so forth, I just wanted to know if the CRA is part of this. And I know this isn't a CRA meeting, but is CRA going to be part or sponsoring or...
Mr. Chairman?
Who's funding?
The reason I say is...
I, I think that all we're doing, whenever we have a public event, they have to be approved by council if we're gonna do anything.
I, I understand, but I was just saying that it, it appeared that realized Brayton is, I just wanted to know that's where the...
Well, once we approve it and you get permission, then they would be able to come forward and...
Okay, okay. Thank you. Still learning.
All right, so is that, you have a...
Move to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, seconded by Mrs. Bartabe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward 5 to approve O.
Yes.
1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
3?[1766.45] Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Thank you. Carries unanimously. Moving forward. Business Advertiser Petition Hearings and Communications, I guess up first is Chief Gier.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor, I think, I don't think it was formal action on adoption of the remaining items of the consent agenda. I don't know if they were or not.
They were, in the beginning.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, so, yes, ma'am, Ms. Melton?
May I read this into the record while Chief Gier's coming up? This is the second reading and public hearing of Ordinance 3091, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Chapter 34, Article 3, relating to the charging of service fees for unnecessary false fire alarms, providing for the city council to establish service fees by resolution, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
All right, comments?
I believe we addressed some, quite a few questions last time, you know, about this, that we'd be going to the second reading, but also that it was mainly housekeeping and a lot of the wording, and then the fee schedule would be updated accordingly, which I believe y'all wanted to see, which is on here this, this meeting, so...
All right, any questions? All right, Mr. Rudisow, open the public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak to Ordinance 3091? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain motion or comments?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Sanders, seconded by Mr. Roth. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
And five.
Yes.
Okay, approved, five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Melton?
Resolution 2182, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Bradenton, adopting a fee schedule for unnecessary false alarm service as provided for in Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Bradenton, repealing resolutions in conflict and providing for an effective date.
Any comments? Mr. Rudisow, anything other than just approving?
No, this is the, the resolution that's implementing the fee schedule.
Okay, all right.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor?
All right, thank you, Counselor Barnaby, seconded by Mr. Roth. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we have a fee schedule set up, and it, it goes first occurrence, no, no fine, and then second, third, fourth. It, it basically hops up by increments, so basically we're giving the, the, the people that are having issues every opportunity to fix the problem instead of paying a fine, so...
Another question, will this all, will this be sent to all the businesses that...
Um, I think we could probably put it out by, you know, email or on our site that there's been an update, and then I'd have to give it to the Fire Marshal to discuss how we want to put it out.
I, I think that would be a good, good public relation.
And I, I don't think anything's really changed, really, as far as the fees. It's just the location of the one went from the, you know, the amendment to this resolution, so I'll let you...
There's no changes to the fee schedule? It's been the same schedule for probably 15 years? So all the businesses are aware of what the schedule is. We're just trying to do some cleanup and put it all in one area instead of... Well, I think that's a good question Mr. Sanders had about the public education. So, you know, I know we do sometimes with, we go around check businesses and do it. It might be good to have something to say, hey, this isn't really a change, but it's updated, here it is, and, you know, just positiveness. We can attach it to our inspection. When we go out to do an inspection, anybody that has an alarm, we can give them a little fire, this is here, just so that you're aware.
How often do you do inspections?
We're, we're trying to go on an annual basis with some, some businesses with manpower, we'll get them to for a couple of weeks, but all state mandated, we're doing annually. All right, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Perry, but we have an ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. We're on final passage on Ordinance Number 3092, which deals with the micro mobility system and, and devices. Counsel may remember.
You want to have Ms. Melton read it first?
Yeah, why don't you start?
This is the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 3092, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending the city of Bradenton Code of Ordinances at Chapter 62, Streets and Sidewalks, to create Article 6, micro mobility system and devices in order to permit and regulate a micro mobility system within the city, establishing general permit provisions, establishing regulations, providing for imposition of fees, providing for enforcement of violations, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, providing for repeal of temporary moratorium, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Comments, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. This is obviously a matter of, of high interest that's been before Counsel in length and also high input. We had the moratorium in place that, that basically put a prohibition until we were able to work through the issues of how to approach th, this problem as it relates to micro mobility devices. I think we're at a point, and we've had the micro mobility committee, the study that was generated by the committee, the input of the various city, city agencies, opportunities for public comment, and a host of other vetting processes. So before you is really the proposed ordinance that would permit the, the micro mobility within the city, and particularly some of the provisions of the ordinance are found on page three of 18, particularly Section 4, subsection ones, which basically state that, that it would permit and regulate micro mobility systems and devices in the city. As to where and what devices, which was the subject matter of debate and discussion, which was good, healthy, thoughtful discussion, we thought that it was best to try to look at a specific area, which is that L-shaped kind of configuration along the Riverwalk and perhaps coming down nine through the Village of the Arts, probably stopping in the southern area of Lecon Park for, with, with give or take a couple of blocks that are going to be really defined probably more specifically when we deal with a contractor. We think that having that flexibility is probably the better approach opposed to legislatively here on the dais, carving out a particular geographical area specifically, because I think we're going to need some flexibility to try different things, maybe give or take a block one way or the other and other components, but generally keep it within the contours of that Riverwalk, then coming up to the downtown core and south over to Lecon. So that is provided in the, the ordinance that was drafted. I think the, Scott did a really good job of providing that, us, us that kind of flexibility and trying to address the concerns and direction of Counsel. There are provisions in there about the operators, particularly under, I believe it's going to be page eight of 18, Section 62, 134 at Sec A's through C, which will deal with competitive selection. And so what we're looking at doing is putting out an RFP basically for, for a vendor to do this. And, and vendors have different products, and they have different features of those products, geospatial restrictions and things like that that can actually, I think, shut the electronic capacity of the scooter down if it varies outside the parameters of the, of the, the area, the use area. And of course, charging stations, different rules and the like. Typically, I think we're going to do best by dealing with the vendors on that and bringing a proposal back to Counsel, and if there are particular provisions that need to be tweaked or minor changes, probably do it through the, the process of approving a contract. It would give the administration some flexibility to do that. As a, as a matter of where we're at in the process, our procurement department, Tammy Sperlin, has actually did, done a RFP when she was down in Sarasota, and she took it and knew and improved, and I'm told it's ready to go, which is good news, because I think if we had to start it from the ground up, it would have been a little bit more, probably time-consuming. So that's what this, this legislation is about, and I'll stand for any questions, and we have some other folks that can maybe answer some questions on it.
Any questions before we go to the public hearing?
Yes.
Ready? Mr. Sanders?
So we're still going to have a committee to review this. I've asked to be on it, you've agreed, to, to work out some of these details, because most of that's in my area, so that's still going to happen, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, that'll be through, there's a couple of different ways to do it, but I was contemplating originally through the RFP process, but we could have an advisory committee as well, and, and the advisory committee could help us through the selection as far as define the contours and the like. I, I know the time is of the essence, so I'd probably try to get it done the most efficient way possible, and, you know, I'd imagine there's going to be several responders to the RFP for this project.
Right. Right, no further questions.
All right. All right, so at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Ordinance 3092. Public hearing's open. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Check.
We have a motion by Councilman Sanders, seconded by Councilman Roth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel.
All right, moving forward, we're going to the Planning Community Development Director now. Mrs. Melton, if you want to read in the resolution first?
This is a public hearing for Resolution 2185, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Bradenton, Florida, approving the city of Bradenton's Community Development Block Grant Program, 2020 to 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, and for, and, excuse me, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mrs. Singer?
Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. This is a, an item to accept the annual capable report. We're finding it consistent with what's been determined in the city's consolidated plan following approval. This would be forwarded to HUD, and it's here for your annual approval.
This was, uh...
Any questions?
Accepted by the Affordable Housing Committee?
Yes.
Any other questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
We have to have a public hearing.
A public hearing on this one? Yes, you're right. All right, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Check.
By Mr. Sanders, I heard Mr. Roth first. Start the vote in Ward Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carries unanimously. And Mrs. Melton, if you can read the next ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, if we could, just, just as a, no, just, just a moment to say, Vicki White, who served our, our city in the capacity of the HCD manager, chose to accept another position. I'm not saying that she, she snuck out of here before we could do anything nice for her, but that's kind of how I feel. But I didn't want this moment to go by without saying how much we appreciated Ms. White's service to us, and I asked if she would be here today, and she said that today was when she started her new job, and I said, and you set it up that way on purpose? And she just smiled at me. So I, those of us that have known Ms. White for a while know that she's not, she didn't ever want a lot of attention or fanfare, so she probably did set it up that way, but I think that we need to at least acknowledge her, her service to the city and what a fine job she did for us. She'll be missed.
She'll be missed, and I think one of the things that, when I talked with her the other day before she left, that, you know, I thanked her because sometimes there's the job that you get a lot of grief from individuals, and there was times that she took a lot of grief from certain individuals that wasn't on her, but she had to take it, and she did a great job at that, and, and so I told her I hope that those individuals didn't follow her. So she was, she was, she goes, I'll be in Sarasota, so hopefully not, so, Mr. Sanders?
I reiterate that, and I've worked with her for three years on the Housing Committee, and she's very knowledgeable. We've, we've lost a good employee there, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to fill the gap.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? All right, thank you, Ms. Singer. I think you're still up, but we'll have Tamara read the next ordinance.
Ordinance 3083, second reading and public hearing, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, adding a private property rights element to the city's comprehensive plan, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, again, Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. This is second reading of an ordinance. This is legislative item to amend the city's comprehensive plan to include a property rights element in the plan per Senate Bill 496. We've chosen to adopt the language directly out of the statutes, which follows suit with what a lot of communities are doing. We do have to adopt this before we can adopt any other amendments to the comprehensive plan. This had been approved on first reading in September and was transmitted to the state and all state agencies. We received no objections, comments, or recommendations with respect to this amendment, and we are therefore recommending approval on second reading.
Okay, any comments, or go to the public hearing first? All right, hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sanders.
Is this a permanent, is it ever reversible?
Uh, you can always amend your comprehensive plan. However, per state statutes, you do have to have this element in there, so you could come back and modify it if you found there was other language, and as long as the state found it consistent with the statutes, you can make those amendments.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Coachman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote, Ward Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
And four.
Yes.
Thank you, approved. All right, Ms. Melton?
This is the second reading and public hearing for Ordinance 3084, an ordinance of the city of Bradenton, Florida, amending Policy 1.2.1 of the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan to revise the, the description of the urban central business district future land use category to allow for the consideration of auto-oriented uses when authorized by city council, providing for applicability, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Singer?
Again, Robin Singer with Planning Community Development. This is a petitioner-driven request to amend the city's comprehensive plan, to amend a particular future land use designation within the city's land use element to include an allowance for automotive uses with city council approval. The area in question, it's the UCBD future land use designation, which is in the dark teal color covering the area depicted on the screen. It is basically in the same area that regulates under the Form Base Code. It has a number of different zoning districts within it, and just by way of explanation, your, your comprehensive land use designations are broader generally than your zoning designations. Zoning designations get down to where the buildings can be built, but your comprehensive plan can regulate the uses and densities within particular areas and districts as designated on the future land use map. So you'll see, when you drill down to zoning, there's a number of different districts that are located within that UCBD future land use area. And so when you have a conflict between, basically your land use designation has the So you can have general regulations in your future land use designation, but then more specific and restrictive requirements within the zoning district. So if you see here, T-five, there is some T-six, and T-four-oh, and T, T-four-R within that future land use category. And when you go to the Form Base Code, this tells you what the use restrictions are going to be in those various zoning districts. So this is, I particularly pulled out because we're talking about automotive intensive uses. This is how the Form Base Code prescribes we deal with future land uses. If it is blank, it means the use is prohibited. If it's an SU, it means it requires a special use. If it has a P, it's a permitted use. So within those land use categories, for example, the T-four-R, which is largely a residential district within the Form Base Code, no automotive intensive uses are permitted. But then you get into the T-four-oh, the T-five, and the T-six. You have various uses that are allowed either as permitted, such as parking garages, or special use, as is the case with specialty, service and repair, and sales. So what, also drive-through facilities. And so when we were originally approached, it was a particular piece of property that the petitioner was interested in, and they had spoken to us briefly about the possibility of a restaurant with a drive-through facility. When they were here for first reading, I believe it was put forward that perhaps you would transmit this to the state with a recommendation just to provide some relief with respect to drive-through facilities, which would apply to banks or restaurants. However, your decision at first reading was to transmit it with the allowance as requested by the petitioner, which is to allow for any kind of automotive uses, subject to approval of City Council. So with that in mind, that, that is your future land use category. As you can see, there's some more specifics and restrictive regulations within the zoning category, which would apply as well. You have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to comment, so you're correct in what you're saying, and, and discussion was for a drive-through, and then it was recommended to go ahead and use the language as written to move the process faster, to not have to start the process all over again. Is that not true? That's why we, that's why we kept it, instead of, because the discussion came about drive-through. And then, and then with, you know, there was a consensus to do that. And then the, it seemed to me that what we were doing was we left the wording the way it was, because we were already at the first reading, and we had to get transmission going to the state, and there was the, the process of doing it. So that's why I thought we left it broader.
And, and, and that is true. I mean, I think you could make changes at first reading, you could make it more restrictive, but, but I think the decision was to move forward with that time. But I can't speak for all of City Council and your reasoning on that specifically. But in any case, it was transmitted to the state. Again, we received no objections or, or comments, and therefore it is now before you for second reading and discussion. And with that, I believe the agent for the petitioner is available to address their comments and concerns.
Are you recommending?
Mr. Sanders, Ms. Barnaby has a question.
Well, our recommendation had been for denial going forward to the Planning Commission and into first reading, and for the very reasons stated in the staff report, they were concerned about pedestrian-oriented uses and promoting those within the area. I think the subject property that they were interested in happens to be between two restaurants with drive-through facilities, but we experienced some issues with that in terms of traffic impact on the surrounding area. So for that reason, amongst others, we're, we're concerned about how that impacts properties and redevelopment within the Form Base Code, because the idea is that we promote more pedestrian-oriented mixed-use projects that don't necessarily impact the roadways, the adjacent roadways, the way that these would potentially impact those areas, so.
Ms. Barnaby had a question.
Well, I, I wanted to thank Mr. Sanders for getting my question asked for me.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, any other questions before we go? So, Mr. Russo, we know you go to the public hearing, or?
Correct, we'll open the public hearing and allow the applicant to come forward.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak? Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Bill Galvano, on behalf of VOT Partners LLC. They are the applicant, so to speak, that petitioned to bring this before you for transmitted to the state. Just by way of procedural clarification, again, I, I want to remind the council that this was proposed to the city. It went before the Planning Commission, which approved it unanimously. We came here on first reading. The issue and the question was brought up about limiting it to a drive-through. As you recall, I told you I could not commit to that at that time. I represent a LLC, which has a principal, and I was not going to make that commitment with the principal and ask that you leave the language the same, so that we could trim, transmit it to the state having the maximum flexibility coming back. At this time, there is still no commitment for the use. I think there was this idea that there had been a, a commitment, a deal being made for actually McDonald's, but that is still not the case. And so just to get to the bottom line, we would continue to ask for the maximum flexibility in that language. Again, if you look at the language itself, it is not allowing any particular use. It is simply saying that, given that this property is the old pawn shop that I'm sure you all are not thrilled with having there, that it is on a major highway, US three oh one, across the street from a storage facility, next to a Starbucks, that's not going anywhere that I see in the future, next to a KFC that has been there for years and years, it's not going anywhere, and the property owned actually goes and abuts those from behind, and then across the street on Sixth is a Wawa that's relatively new. And so it really is not reasonable to assume that the laudable, good goals of the future land use element that are promoting what we like to see, and we do see here more right in the center of town, a walkable type of, of community, that's, that's not going to happen there. And so we're just asking you to continue to give us maximum flexibility. If we decide to make a particular use of that property, we'll be right back here. You all will have that decision, and you'll be able to say yay or no. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak, public comment? Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and.
Question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Sanders.
Again, Ms. Singer, is this something that, in the future, we could undo, or? Yes, answer is yes.
And I, I would say, though, I mean, if, if somebody has development-backed expectations, it's something.
Well, if it's already done, yeah, it'd be grandfathered in, right, exactly, exactly. I, I motion to approve the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment?
So, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Okay, so I remember the conversation, and we all, I, I think the assumption was that it was going for a drive-through, and, you know, changing the comp plan for, I mean, we're looking at this district that it's a big, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty important district for development, and I really wasn't comfortable moving towards general auto. You know, I, I don't consider personally drive-through being general automotive use. It's just my, my view, that that's a restaurant or a bank that has a drive-up window. So I, I just hate to kind of open it, what, so when we do this, if we're going to do it as-is, I know, I know it comes back for special use, but doesn't it encourage people to come in with the type of activities? Like, like, we really don't want to see a used car lot.
Right. Yeah, I, I don't know about encouraging people, but it creates that allowance. And when the decision was made in two thousand and nineteen to put the language into the comprehensive plan, I think there was a lot of thought put into that, and based on reports that had been done for the downtown area, which was the basis for the CRA master plan and the basis for the Form Base Code, I, I think there was a, a lot of thought process that went into that to not put you in the position where you're just considering a special use permit that could be, you know, subject to criteria approved, and, and kind of made the statement overall throughout the area. And it wasn't just the UCBD, but it was the Urban Core, and also, I believe, Urban Village that had that language put into it, and we're really just talking about one of those. It, it really just depends on how do you view it. I think the, the idea was like forever forward, let's, like, try to move forward on redevelopment that doesn't include those items. It opens the door, I don't know that it necessarily encourages, but subject to criteria, you would have to approve. I mean, if they met all the criteria on a special use permit, it does put you in the position where it's difficult, although you do decide those on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so, um, you know, if, so we're really talking about a property, an applicant with a property. But we're also talking, now we're talking about a big district change, which I'm not, I'm comfortable with saying the applicant's making a request specifically for a property, and to do that's doing a big issue change. I really, you know, I thought, I thought I said pretty clearly at that, that last meeting that I, I'm okay with the drive-through issue, because I just don't see that as auto-oriented. I, I kind of hate to move backwards, and I don't, I don't know what would come out of it. But I do remember the process of the comp plan change and all the, all the effort that went into it, and the thought process, so I kind of hate to move backwards on that, so. I mean, I, I try to be as business-friendly as possible and everything like that, I, I think that this, it's.
All right.
If it were, if it were going, if it were going for drive-through, I would absolutely support this.
And I, I would note that also you have a hundred and eighty days from the time we got the letter, so that puts us to about May second, in order to adopt on second reading. We'll probably, you know, depending on what you decide today, we'll still move forward on, on the property rights element, but.
So that means you have to bring this back?
Huh?
That means you have to bring this back?
No, 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 I'm saying that this is within a hundred and eighty days. If you adopt it today, and we transmit it to the state, that's, that's fine. I'm just saying, if, if you have any questions or concerns, and you want to ponder it longer, you can do that, you have some time, you have some leeway.
But we'd have to table it?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have, Ms. Coker has some comments.
Yeah, I, I too was part of the, the establishment with the, the new Form Base Code, and, and it was all about creating walkability. And, and I don't know how we address it, but that, that doesn't work at that area. You're never going to have with KFC and Starbucks, you're not going to have something that's going, someone's going to feel comfortable walking up to. So I, I don't know, I just don't like, I don't know how we address it, but I feel like we need to at least not restrict the rights of that property owner, because you're going to essentially make it undevelopable, I would feel like.
Mr. Roth, let me get Ms. Barnaby first, and then.
I do know that I have seen many individuals walking along US forty-one there. You have people coming over from the hospital to go to KFC, I'm sorry? People going over to KFC from the hospital, people going to Starbucks from the hospital. And then there are community members there that will be walking along that area. So we do have it. I'm not sure how comfortable people are doing it. And when we look at whatever goes in there, I want to make sure that there is the ability for people to walk along that area. There, there's a reason the state of Florida leads the nation in pedestrian deaths, and a lot of it has to do with US forty-one, quite frankly.
Well, one of the things that I think that Ms. Singer said, and it's been said all along, it doesn't necessarily open it up totally, but it still has to come back, anything would have to come back to this council. So if it's not something that, that fits, then this council still wouldn't have that decision to deny.
Right, that's the kind of the clawback, that, that we always have, that.
And in two thousand and nineteen, I was involved in a lot of that, and it really was restricting more than I thought we wanted to restrict certain businesses. So, you know, I think that's something that, again, this council will decide by special use what happens. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, could we go back to the map you just had a minute ago? And, and I agree, see, we have, we have two issues here. We're talking about a property, which I think we all agree is on, you know, a major thoroughfare, between two major thoroughfares. But we're changing the zone, the, the, we're changing the comp plan use. We look at, it goes all the way up to the Riverwalk. It goes all the whole length of Martin Luther King. It goes over into Ballard Park, which is a hundred percent residential. I mean, it's, it's, it's mixed use, you know, it's got residential, it's got, it's got usage, but it's still, it's residential right now. So that's my concern, is that we're opening a big door for a little door. That's just kind of where I'm at. And I, and I, and I said this when we, you know, this is, I think I made the motion on this a while ago, is that I, I was comfortable moving forward, but I, I'm not changing my views on this, that I, I support, I, I just don't see a drive-through as being an auto-oriented business. But I do, a car wash is auto-oriented, you know, a, a, a big, you know, Tire Kingdom is not what I'm looking for, you know. So I hate to pick on them, just as general use like that, but that's kind of where I'm from.
All right, Ms. Coachman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're considering this as we look at the Urban Core Business District, which entails more than that small space in question right now. There are still things that I feel should not be in other areas of that area of Core, Urban Core Business District. I don't think we will want the car lot, we wouldn't want car repair and so forth. Why can't we still have it open but restricted? Is there such thing, I mean, can? I know it's, you don't want to stifle a council for development. However, there are some things that I feel as a council, we know we don't want. So if you leave it open, there's still that possibility that some of the things you don't want might come for you.
You do have that right as a council, because it has to come back before you. It's not going to be just because you approved this today that it's done. So that's how I always would look at it as a council person. We still have the right, if something comes up that meets the criteria, we still have the right, just like a special use on docks, special use on other things, we can say no if they go outside the criteria, or if it's not something we envisioned. Mr. Sanders?
Is this, what, what zoning is this, T-five, or S? What is it?
Yeah, the.
SD?
Uh, the one that is, the property in question was.
Go back.
Oh, there it is.
Which one of these?
Yeah, it would be the T-five district.
Okay, go back, T-five. Would you go back, please? T-five says no car washes, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, it, it, it's got automotive specialty, parking lots, drive-through, service station, repair. Okay, now, if you would, please, go to the next slide and put your finger on exactly where we're talking about, if you would, just kind of draw it.
Specific property we're concerned about.
It is right there, I get that. But you're, but we would be changing what area?
The entire area.
Well, the entire area in, in purple, or in light blue, whatever color it is?
Yeah, this is your zoning map, and these are the zoning districts that fall within the dark teal area, which is your UCBD.
Well, what confused me there is this map shows a, a residential to the, if you go to the right, looking at the map, is that excluded or included?
That would be included, however.
Okay, so that goes clear out to fifteenth.
Your, the, the T-four-R district that's located within that district has all of those uses prohibited. So, so it really.
That, that is not, okay, I'm a little confused, then.
It, it's because your, your future land use map area is broader, it takes in a number of different zoning districts, but the zoning districts are still going to control on the individual uses as they come in. So it's allowing for, where it is allowed in the zoning, it's allowing for that. So even while we had the prohibition, you couldn't go for any of these uses, even where it's listed as special use or permitted. However, what this opens the door for is now you can just abide by the zoning district standards, which were less restrictive before, and the comp plan control, because it was more restricted.
Okay, here's my next question, can we change those boundaries?
Yes, you could do, I mean, whether it be.
Because there's some areas that's specifically homeowners, and there's some between the Manatee Avenue corridor there that's clearly commercial.
Yeah.
And should, and there's some homes in there, but it's clearly a commercial. And when you're going both ways, it, thousands of cars a day with the Kentucky Fried Chickens, and the Wawas, and so forth, it, it's already basically been designated as commercial. There's, you know, I'd be agree with Mr. Galvano that, you know, that there's a word for that, a colloquialism for that, but we can't say it here. And it's, we've got a combination of all kinds of stuff in there. So it's already been determined by us at some point in time that that's that area, but moving it over into the residential area, why can't we redo the map?
Uh, we can take a look at that, that's a longer process. We have to make sure that we have the agreement of the property owners, that we're not rezoning or changing our land use category essentially involuntarily. or changing their land use category essentially involuntarily or if they raise an objection to that. It, it's just a more complicated process. Plus, you have to look at it in terms, so it's not spot zoning or the equivalent for a comp plan. You have to make sure that you're basically moving a boundary over rather than creating a pool of its own comp plan amendment. Now, I guess what I'm saying is that this amendment in terms of automotive uses, that the residential portions of it that are in the T4R would already be safe because those uses are prohibited in that district. So this affects the T4O, T5 and T6 that are within that area of the UCVD, future land use category.
So we can't approve this subject to recreating the boundaries?
You can't do it subject to recreating the boundaries, it's a legislative, yeah.
T4R though, what you're, I think the area you're talking about-
Yeah.
Is already restricted from it, so you wouldn't need to change the boundaries for that, even though it's within it.
But this wouldn't override that?
No, not from the T4R, no.
The more restrictive applies, so you're-
And show us the word T4R areas on your map.
Right over in this area here, these-
What about over in here where the residential is over and along the river? Up, there you go.
There's T5.
Yeah, in this area here, yeah, that's T5, so it would be open to the request for-
Well, that's what you're proposing is T5, what is it now?
Go back to that other map.
So, here's, here's your T5.
Yeah. But what, what is it today? That's not T5 today.
Yes, yes it is, yes it is.
Well, we're gonna move it through then.
We're not changing the T5 district, we're changing the UCBD, future land use category that happens to cover that area as well.
So, Bill, if I'm not mistaken, the part that's in the trees and all that, the picture, no, go back to the other ones, Robin. So, right there, it doesn't change.
Doesn't change.
Well, and this area here, you see this under the future land use category, this area is actually excluded. We, I think we had a more generalized map for zoning, just to show you what was in the area. This area is not within the UCBD district according to this future land use map. That, that category does extend out along the Riverwalk extension, but it doesn't go into this area, which is primarily residential.
Yeah, as long as we don't, this, this will get some attention, as long as we don't put a public boat ramp in there.
So, go back to the other picture, if you don't mind, Robin, where's, yeah, that. When you look at the development that could happen on Tarpon Point and some of that, you know, that could then spur other development through some of the Riverwalk, which we might want, if you're gonna have a Riverwalk that's gonna go down to Manatee Avenue or cut over Third, there might be opportunity in the future, you know, because it changes the dynamics of that neighborhood with several hundred living residences in the Tarpon Point area, if that, if that ever comes to fruition. Mr. Roth?
Yeah, so, and, and that's a good point, Mr. Brown, is that it will, it will spur opportunities in economic growth, but it won't be auto-oriented. It, it'll be, it'll be what we really want, it'll be, it'll be high-end, you know, it'll be, you know, condominiums, restaurants, hotels, which is the stuff we want in that district, that's why we changed it. And I just wanted to make everyone aware that, so, so if we, if we make this change today, we're giving everyone more property rights. So if you think you can go back and change the map in the future, you've just given the property owners more property rights, and in the future, they're gonna say, no, I don't want, they don't have it now until we give it to them. And you're gonna say, well, we wanna go ahead and take it back, it's gonna be no. You gave it, you gave it to me fair and square and I'm keeping it, that's, that's, that's what'll happen.
But it also is market-driven, what's gonna happen, if, if we have development in there and we need a specific business or something in there that they see is gonna, to help, it's gonna be the opportunity with this council still deciding whether it happens or not through special use.
And, and I wanna address that comment. It may not be this council. It may be a totally different group of, of people up here that don't have our views and, and values.
But that's the-
Are you planning something?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, things, things changed, you know, we change it now.
And that's totally true, but that's what the people voted for.
Let's face it, we had a totally different council here not long ago.
But that's what the people vote for and that's what the voters do, they change, the opportunity changes for growing in the neighborhood.
I'm just, I'm just making sure-
I agree with you.
I'm just making sure everyone's aware that, that the road, I, I, I supported this for, we're, we're talking about a, you know, 301, US 41, First Street, whatever we wanna call it, it is a major thoroughfare. I mean, we, we're all aware of that. It's between State Road 64 East and West. I mean, we're, we're talking about a, a, a high, a high-impact property and we're talking about changing the district for, a, a, a big district for that one little square. And I, I was very clear on moving, last time on this meeting, what my, what my views were on this. So, I mean, they haven't changed.
Could we ask Mr. Galvano a question, or could I? The question is, from what you just heard, can you live with restrictions that Mr. Roth has? I know it's, it was easier to do it all, but can you, can you live with that restriction?
Again, I, I can't, I know what, I represent a principle.
Right.
I-
I know what they want.
Yeah, so I, I can't come in here and, and change my position. But what I would like to clarify is, this property, you, you, you have to think in terms of the property first and the other various properties throughout this future land use designation. There are rights that existed there. Those rights were the zoning classifications that allowed certain uses. With the comprehensive plan being more restrictive as it was, it stymied those rights. We're, we're just saying wherever the property is in this one particular designation, look, with approval, and I was very specific about the language, come back here on, to you, so it's beyond just the criteria of the zoning. It also has this additional layer with approval of majority vote of the, the council. But we, we didn't wanna be sitting on a piece of property with a certain zoning restriction that is essentially, as Councilwoman Coker said, unmarketable.
But you are here.
What's that?
Which you already are. You're already restricted, or you wouldn't be asking for it, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Right. But, but the problem is it, it now covers other, other areas, which would, you know, was not the intent, you know, Mr. Roth's, I mean, do we really wanna expand that and why can't we limit it to-
You mean geographic?
Satisfy your particular, yeah.
And, and you could, you have that ability to do that. You'd have to re-transfer, but what I'm saying is, the, the restrictions in this general area are not limited to the future land use designation. The restrictions are actually two layers and, and more, more restrictive from a procedural standpoint is the zoning classifications of the various properties within that. So you, you're not in one fell swoop, changing the, the zoning of properties within this district, you're not changing the market factors or the incentives to develop in a certain way. All you're, you're doing is saying, property owner, here's your zoning, we're gonna allow you to maybe operate within that zoning, but we're still gonna, still gonna come back to us on top of you meeting the criteria of that zoning.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was just gonna throw something out there for the council, just hearing the comments and, and the way the discussion is going. We do have other areas of the comp plan where we do limit consideration of either particular uses or in some cases, density and intensity based on having frontage on an arterial roadway. So, it, and I don't know if the applicant would agree to this, but if the council wanted to limit the consideration of auto-oriented uses either to frontage on an arterial or specifically to First Street, that's, that is something that could be done with this language.
Well, that's what I was questioning Ms. Singer about, that instead of take a long process, but we can do that today?
Yes.
Like, for example, that, we, we already know that the arterial roads, which is the First and Manatee, both sides, so that covers this, that would be what I'd be in favor of, I guess, absolutely.
I can live with that.
And, and I think, great, I'm, thanks for, thank you.
So, well, first we need to check to make sure the applicant's okay with that because this is their application, and then we'd need to see if we could come up with some language. So either we try to do that today, maybe on a brief recess, or try to bring it back, but-
Mr. Galvano?
Yeah, I think, and thank you, Scott, I think that's something that, that can work.
Okay, good.
I mean-
So, do we need to take a brief recess, come up with the language and then come back and incorporate that?
Before we do though, I'd like to get consensus from the council as to whether or not they'd want to limit it to First Street or whether we're just gonna limit it to having frontage on a major arterial roadway.
My concerns are, I thank you for that suggestion, because I think it gets us down the road. My concerns are, you know, in areas where we're trying to, to make change and do things like, just say the 14th Street corridor, Martin Luther King, we don't want stuff like this, you know, we want, we want specific businesses going on those roads, not, not, not this broad spectrum. But I have no problem with First, it's, it's a, it's a highway, I've got no problem with Manatee, it's a highway. You know, I, 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 there, it's already a highway, it's not gonna change.
I don't think it could be anything other than commercial.
So do you, would you, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barnaby?
Would you prefer to have it named specific roadways or would you be comfortable with an arterial roadway? Or would you, which, I, I think they're asking, they're asking for guidance, so.
I think, I think designated Manatee and First is, is probably the first step, unless that's creates anything else.
When you talk about major arterial, where does that play in?
Well, then you start getting into-
Martin Luther King, that's my concern.
Right, I don't, I don't even know frankly if we have that designation in our comp plan, so it probably would be better if we could-
We said specific.
What we're talking about, at least what I was talking about is Manatee, in between Manatee Split and the First Street.
Correct.
That'd be Sixth Avenue.
First, Sixth and Manatee, I call both of them Manatee, but they're actually split. In between that, that corridor down, all the way down is, is what I'm talking about, not, not 14th, anything else.
And you will still require a special use permit?
You still require a special use.
Yeah, right, we'd still-
And could we also include Ninth?
No.
No.
No?
That's what they're saying they don't want to because of-
We're, we're trying to get Ninth away from auto-oriented, that's the-
Auto-oriented, it's only auto-oriented.
We can do that later if that was necessary.
All right, you think, you have enough direction?
Clear direction.
Yeah, let, let me just see if, if Robin wants to ask any questions or make any comments before we take a recess. Did you, because I didn't check with planning staff before I threw that out there.
I think if, if you wanna narrow it down and I-
You can do it legally, right.
And, and while I agree we don't want it on Ninth, but Ninth is also mainly urban core, it's a different land use category in any case, but I think we need to take a look at, yeah, those corridors and determine where you want them in.
Look for the unintended consequence if you do those.
Well, you know, the main reason we, we started the auto, the not having, not allowing auto-oriented, were basically Ninth and 14th. That, that was where this whole concept started up. How are we gonna change Ninth and 14th? First thing we're gonna do is take away auto-oriented.
Ninth Street or way, or Avenue?
Ninth Street, Ninth Street. And then I call Ninth, I call Martin Luther King Ninth Avenue, so Ninth Street is basically, that's when we started the process of auto-oriented, was to change the dynamics of Ninth, that really Ninth was it. And then it came into 14th as well, but 14th was mostly hotels, motels and all, but really Ninth Street was what we were trying to change the dynamics of and we knew that it was all auto-oriented, so that's why we started this process. So, i- if we can just limit it to First and Man, and State Road 64 and US 301, that works.
Right. And Sixth Avenue is included in State Roads.
Sixth, Manatee and First.
State Road 64.
Yep.
All right, so is five minutes enough?
No, you need the 15.
15 minutes, is that enough?
Yes.
Okay, so it's 10:15, we'll come back at 10:30, we'll be adjourned for 15.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Singer?
Yes, so I hand it out to you, hard copies of the ordinance and did give it to the petitioner's agent as well, as the city attorney. And I'm gonna attempt to pull it up on the screen here.
Last page.
And really, we're looking at Exhibit A at the end of it, which includes the language that's being amended.
Just the last page that you gave us.
Yes.
And nothing's been changed on the first three?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll change my motion to include Exhibit A.
I'll agree to it.
Okay, so the motioner and the second agree to the Exhibit A that's been discussed?
Mr. Mayor, if we could just get the applicant on the record that they're in agreement with the change to the, to the language, that'd be great.
To, to adding Exhibit A?
Well, Exhibit A was already there, we just, the language-
As amended.
Language as amended.
Bill Galvano for Vought Partners LLC. Yes, I have worked through the language with staff and the city attorney. The applicant concurs with the change and I thank you all for your patience this morning, I thank all of you for your patience this morning.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion?
Where's Mr. Roth? I mean-
He's out crying.
All right, so we have a motion and a second with the change and both motioner and second are agree to it?
Yes.
So, we're going to start the vote, any further discussion? Start the vote in Ward 1?
Yes.
2?
Yes.
4?
Yes.
5?
Yes.
All right, with Mr. Roth out of the room, carries 4 to 0 unanimously, thank you.
And this will be transmitted to the state and become effective, I believe, within 30 days of the state's acceptance.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singer and all the staff, thank you, Mr. Galvano. All right, moving forward, Mrs. Melton, we need to administer the oath.
Yes, anyone wishing to address city council during the following public hearing will please stand and raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate.
Okay, Resolution 2181, do we want?
Resolution 2181, a resolution of the city council of the city of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU.21.3731 to operate a dog boarding facility or kennel in the suburban commercial corridor zoning district at 6312 to 6318 Cortez Road West, Bradenton, Florida, providing for severability and providing for an effect of date.
Counsel, Mayor Schwartz, planning and zoning manager. This is a petition for a special use to run a dog, doggy daycare essentially, a dog boarding facility kennel on Cortez Road in the suburban commercial corridor zoning district. Location, you can see, you're probably all familiar with Clancy's. I've got a better exhibit in a minute. Your zoning again, future land use is suburban commercial corridor, which serves commercial uses commensurate with suburban arterial highways. Your zoning is also suburban commercial corridor where animal boarding and kennels are a special use. The subject property is a multi-tenant building here, contains two vacant units on the east side. You've got Edward Jones adjacent to it, some other commercial uses and a Chase Bank at the end. Across the street to the east is Clancy's Lounge. You want to keep that in mind for some later comments. You've got, Manatee County is up here with a construction company, which also owns a vacant commercial land that lies between the proposed facility and Heritage Village condos. And then you've got Manatee Ave and Bradenton Healthcare on the south.
I have a quick question, Myra. Did we not approve something on that vacant commercial land in the recent past?
Not since.
Well, it was before, I think this council, was it?
I don't remember that.
I thought we had approved something on there, yeah, before, a couple of years back, some sort of, so it'd been before Robin's time. All right, so no, there was some sort of business that came and we approved it, I think, when Mr. Roth and I were here.
I know.
It was a while back.
I know we've done different things in that area, I don't remember that.
So I didn't know if that was still, maybe it's aged out because of timing.
If you had, it would have aged out by now. I'm not aware of it. It belongs to the TDS Construction. They've talked to us informally about future plans for that that would involve.
Okay, so nothing's planned there that we know?
Nothing at this time, no. The applicant wants to use the two east units to house a dog kennel, a doggy daycare facility, which we're all dog lovers. We, the kennels are not quite what they used to be. It's more like a daycare for dogs, or an overnight care for dogs. They've submitted a plan, it's a little bit hard to read here, you can probably have a better view than I do on this screen. The building, if you can make the outline here, they are leasing the easternmost portion. What they want to do is remove some parking from the rear. This used to be a restaurant, by the way, a year or so ago, that has been vacant for, since that time. They want to remove the parking spaces here, add fencing, and create an outdoor area here, and then have indoor play areas also. The parking outside of this will remain. There is sufficient parking for all units within the building. The interior site plan shows a rough layout of kennel layout. They will have the capacity of 60 to 80 kennels in here. That's not to say that they would all be used at any given time. They, of course, have their business, busy times during the week, or during the weekend, and it's quieter during the week, so they would not be occupying all of those. The applicant is here and can give you a much more detailed picture of how they intend to use the interior space. Special use, of course, you're all familiar with the criteria that you need to look through for your assessment for approval or denial, your general standards and your review criteria, and I'll go over the important ones briefly here. You have all of that in detail in your packets. First thing of importance is the adequacy of ingress and egress. You've got existing two-way vehicular access points on Cortez Road and 63rd Street West. They provide adequate access to the building as it is, they're not to change. Location and design of refuse and service areas in regard to availability, adequacy and effect upon surrounding properties. There's an existing dumpster pad at the rear of the property, it's adequate to serve this new use. Dog waste stations will be placed in accessible locations outside the building for patrons as they're bringing their dogs in. Animal waste will be disposed in thick ply trash bags and placed in dumpsters for pickup with solid waste. There is exterior turf, to be exterior turf in the play areas outside, and that's going to be cleaned nightly using cleaners that are specific to dog facilities. Any refuse facility, of course, including the dumpster location, is required to comply with all city requirements and is subject to approval of Public Works during the site improvement permit development review process. If there is no site improvement development review process, then the applicant will be working with Public Works if there are any changes to be made. At this point, there are no changes to be made. Signs and exterior lighting, any lighting or signage is permitted in accordance with City of Bradenton's requirements, requires permitting. There is no change to the lighting, they may have some signage changed out. Effect on the value of surrounding properties, the use shall not hinder the development of nearby vacant properties or adversely affect their economic value. The proposed project won't affect the value in a negative way of surrounding properties provided that noise levels are monitored and maintained below maximum allowed, and there will certainly be a positive factor because it takes away a vacant use and provides a commercial use for that area. Adequacy of land and/or building which are to be used. The site accommodates the proposed building and related improvements, and it meets city standards for site design. The combined units are a sufficient size to contain the proposed use. The capacity of dogs is determined by two things, the Animal Housing Code and the Fire Prevention Code, section for animals. We've had a discussion with Fire, and they've deemed it adequate for the number of dogs that are proposed. Environmental quality of the district to which the use is proposed and the effect of the special use permit might have on such quality. There's not going to be any negative impacts to existing environmental quality of the district as a result of the use. The dog waste stations will keep any outdoor indiscretions controlled. Animal waste will be disposed of, as I said, in ply bags and taken to dumpsters to be picked up, and the exterior turf will be cleaned nightly. Consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, the proposed use is consistent. Staff finds that it's consistent with the site's underlying future land use designation of suburban commercial corridor, which seeks to serve your commercial uses that are commensurate with suburban arterial roadways. General compatibility or appropriateness with adjacent properties and other property in the district with special consideration given to the proposed hours of operation. While the use itself is generally compatible with the area, there is a factor of noise. I have Great Danes, I know about this personally, and your barking dogs can produce noise. There's been some concern expressed by the people in the condos to the north. The applicant, we've had discussions with the applicant. Planning Commission asked that the applicant put together a concise noise mitigation plan based upon professional advice, which they have done. And we have incorporated that noise mitigation plan into some very specific stipulations. The mitigation plan includes a false interior wall with acoustic insulation, which will barrier the noise from the adjacent Edward Jones unit. They'll hang baffle panels from the ceiling to absorb echoing sound. They'll be doing daily sound monitoring, monitoring both inside and out the facility at sensitive locations, at the perimeters to the rear, to the east, which they'll be competing with Clancy's, so. And of course, interior, which is where it's important. And they'll be working with the tenants, they've offered to work with the tenants of the adjacent units as much as possible. They're putting acoustic fencing around the outside play area, and they're hanging, they're willing to hang additional panels and do ceiling tiles if the initial methods aren't sufficient to keep the noise within code limitations. Your code limitations are, of course, your noise ordinance. So they do have, they're specifically numbered, these are in the stipulation. Staff is recommending that the special use, SU 20, well, let's see what that is, SU 21.3731, it recommends approval. It's compliant with the requirements of the City of Bradenton Land Use Regulations, Chapter 3.3.1, and staff finds it consistent with comprehensive plan, subject to stipulations that are specific to a noise mitigation plan. The stipulations also set parameters for the applicant to work with neighbors and staff to continue to reduce any noise nuisance that may result from the kennel use once the mitigation plan is in place. The applicant has expressed agreement with the stipulations. Planning Commission met in public hearing on November 10th, 2021, and based upon staff and applicant presentations, as well as public comments, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of SU 21.3731, subject to stipulations as recommended by staff, and subject to a noise mitigation plan. I'll read those stipulations to you now, but I do want to mention, the resolution that is in your packet was changed slightly. I believe Ms. Melton provided you with a new one, and it was changed as to format only, the content remains the same. I'll read the stipulations. Number one, if you can hear me properly. Noise abatement methods shall be integrated into the interior improvements of the units, including but not limited to, A, provide a false wall to the west interior wall, which will be insulated with an NRC rating of no less than 0.95, and enhanced with a one-half inch homosope board and two floor-to-ceiling 5/8 inch drywall panels. B, install no less than 12 1-inch-thick baffle panels with an NRC rating of no less than .85 throughout the kennel room to be suspended from the ceiling. C, provide no less than 1/8 inch acoustic fencing around the perimeters of the interior and exterior play areas. I do want to mention here that fence is to be eight feet tall, two feet of concrete at the base, and six feet of PVC at the top. If staff, if city staff determines that noise readings taken at the property line or within the adjoining unit exceed 75 dBADBC between the hours, and this is directly from the noise ordinance, between the hours of 7:00 AM until 10:30 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 7:00 AM until midnight Friday, Saturday, and holidays, or 65 dBADBC at all other times, then the following improvements shall be installed. Two inch-thick Broadway-type acoustic panels to be installed on inner walls with an NRC rating of no less than .45, and B, to install one and a half inch acoustic ceiling tiles to hang from the drop ceiling. If noise levels in the adjoining unit at the property line continue to exceed above, the above-described levels after all improvements above are completed, then the applicant may propose additional mitigation methods to be implemented once reviewed by staff. And three, if staff determines that the applicant is unable to provide mitigation to maintain noise levels below the levels described herein, then staff shall schedule a hearing before the City Council to consider revocation of the special use permit. That concludes my presentation, the applicant is here.
Question, yes ma'am?
Thank you. Are they proposing that they will board dogs overnight? And if so, are there going to be staff members on premise?
Yes, to both questions.
Thank you.
Who, how, who and how often are the noise decibel going to be monitored by, again, who, how often?
The applicant will be doing their monitoring, they've purchased, they've purchased monitors that are of a high standard, and will be communicating with staff.
Shouldn't that be something we do?
We will if there's a complaint.
Yeah, well, only if it's a complaint, and we have the capability to do that through the, what, PD?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement? Only, only on a complaint?
Yes.
But we won't do it other than that as a regular check?
We don't, we don't normally, staff doesn't normally do that in any case, we can.
We could, but you're proposing that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the outside, you said there was an exterior panel for noise? Is that, what kind of panel is that, and what about the noise that goes, escapes through the roof?
On the outside?
On the outside.
Noise will travel up, but it also travels out. They're proposing PVC acoustic-type fencing that is, that absorbs echoing sounds.
Well, but just PVC fencing won't absorb that much, will it?
It's, well, that's why it's specified in here. They have gotten professional advice as to the type of materials to use, they're here.
And no roof covering?
There's no roof covering, no, not to the outside.
But if the noise goes straight up, nobody outside of it should hear it, so it wouldn't be something unless, sorry.
I don't know about you, but what goes up has to come down somewhere.
Some down.
You know, next door probably won't mind Clancy's, because they.
It'll be louder than the.
Well, they sing, you know, ain't nothing but a hound dog anyway.
And the other thing to consider, it's like a dog park. Dogs aren't standing there barking, as I said before, this isn't kennels, the old-style kennel, where dogs can see each other, where they're stressed, where they're, they're in, they may be in play mode barking, but not in, like my dogs, hound mode, barking afraid of everything. It's gonna be a different type of situation. Again, the applicant can explain that.
And they're gonna have opportunity, if they're there, if they hear a dog barking, they know they gotta.
That's correct, they are monitored.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, because I don't think anybody was here when we created the, well, Mr. Brown, you were, when we created the noise ordinance, and we put it upon PD to monitor the noise ordinance and the decibels, and they purchased decibel reading devices, and displayed it here, and so they have the capability, if there's a complaint, to come out and actually measure the sound.
And you know, looking back on that, all the exhibits and different things they brought in, we never heard another thing about it after that. So Ms. Coker?
Yeah, I would like to hear from any surrounding, if they're okay with everything. And I see a lot providing for the noise. Now, I'm, full disclosure, I am not a dog person, but what about the odor that sometimes these places can have? I mean, does that take it into consideration at all?
The way that they propose to manage any waste, it should not be an issue. The Manatee County mandates, I'm, the city, Jim might be able to help me, I don't know if the city, from what I've seen, doesn't mandate pickup of dog waste, or how it's done. I know that Manatee County requires it to be in heavy ply, plastic bags and put into the garbage. Yeah, I don't think we have anything that specifically addresses that.
I saw disposal in the documents.
Yeah, so they have that addressed.
Ms. Coker, I think something that, my wife and I have two smaller dogs, but we do take them to a kennel by the airport, and you walk in there, and you know, you are allowed to go in.
You can't smell anything.
It's different than the old, where you've got 50 kennels, and the dogs are sitting in there, and they're all day, and, you know, and again, I've never seen it, obviously, my wife and I went and did a site visit before we left our dogs for a couple of days. So again, I'm not saying this way, but I don't think some of those concerns will be there. I know probably some of the concerns when we have people come up and talk are gonna be about noise and that. Ms. Barnaby?
Since we're all declaring for the record, I love all of God's creatures except for snakes. They don't have feet, they move, it's the devil.
All right, thank you, it's a festive season.
We're getting way out of control, we.
All right, so do we, Scott, open up the public hearing, then let the applicant come up?
Yes, Mr. Brown.
So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. Please state your name and.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. For the record, my name is Bob Schmidt with Land Planning Associates, and I have been sworn. And with me is Kevin Harvey. Like the Planning Commission, I thought that most of the questions would be relative to the business, and this is not Mr. Harvey's first rodeo with respect to this use. He's done two others, and there's obviously a market need for this in West Bradenton. And I'll just open by saying that I've been working with Myra on this, it's been a very good working relationship. And as a certified planner, I have read the staff report and taken a look at the various exhibits and seen what Mr. Harvey has agreed to in terms of noise mitigation. And with that, I'll turn it over to him, and then I'll come back and just wrap it up.
Thank you.
Like you said, my name's Kevin Harvey. My wife and I are looking at opening the dog facility, so I guess I'm here for questions for you, or I guess I'm not sure in the next process.
Any comments?
No, I think they all agree, they're right about the smell, we're there 24/7. It's a very high-end facility, so that's one of the least concerns that we have. I did send a noise decibel reader to our facility up north. That facility was not something we built, and was never really mitigated for sound because it's in an area that didn't require it. And based on everything the city proposed, I don't see any concerns. Based on the decibel reading I was doing at our peak times, all the things I think that we're gonna implement will maintain a very kosher level for everybody. The wall that we proposed, a building between our unit and the next door at Edward Jones, from everything that I've been told by the contractors, it's overkill of what we're doing, and that's our goal. We're not here to ruin anybody's day or make noise issues, so I think we've addressed it as best as we could.
Ms. Barnaby?
Yes, sir, how many of these facilities do you currently operate?
We own one in Wisconsin, and we had one that was in Lakewood Ranch that we sold.
So again, no pun intended, this isn't your first rodeo.
Correct, yeah, no.
Is this a, do you lease or own the building?
No, we're leasing the building, two units.
Restrictions are in your lease?
Are there any what?
Any restrictions that we're not aware of, or lack thereof?
No, it's pretty straightforward. They're a big company that's owned, they used to own the buildings just to the west, where Sage Biscuit, Annamarie Oyster Bar, they're kind of a big player, from what I'm told, I don't know. They're local, they're nice to work with, we've had no issues.
Is it Benderson?
Uh, no.
Is it, is it, legal question, is, do we have any issues with that being leased versus ownership?
No, the applicant, the property owner is required to sign on to the, to the application, so, no.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead.
Just to wrap up, I say that, again, I have read the staff report, find it consistent with the code and the comp plan, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have two. And we have two public hearing comment cards. The first one will be Chuck Waller, in the public hearing here. Hello, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Chuck Waller, I live at forty-one ninety-six-six Street Court West, Heritage Village. I would say ninety percent of my questions are answered before I get up here. I do have a few problems with Clancy's, ten o'clock, music stops. Will the dogs, they're talking about midnight and everything. Is there a way they can have the dogs inside by ten and not be out barking at midnight, things like that? Another problem I see is the dumpsters where they're putting the feces from the dogs. I hate to say it, we have people walking around the streets that go through those dumpsters all the time, rip stuff out, rip the doors open, throw stuff all around. Will they have a separate dumpster that'll be locked where nobody else can get into it? And, you know, hate to say it, cause a mess. And then the other thing I had a question about, you keep calling it a daycare. Will this be, you know, I heard one person say it's going to be all, you know, overnight, some people keep calling it a daycare, which is it? Is it just during the day, or is it a twenty-four-seven facility?
Yeah, I think, I don't know if it's, obviously, they say it's going to be twenty-four-seven, which is a good answer. Obviously, our waste would have to be monitored, and if somebody was going into it, we have, you know, Mr. McCollum or Myra can answer that as far as the container. And the noise, obviously, if there's a noise problem, we have to fix it.
Noise ordinance.
Yeah.
If, if there's a complaint about the container, then the, that would be a complaint that the applicant would address with Public Works and be able to resolve. We could put that as a stipulation as well. A daycare, that's kind of the commercial term for this, it's being technically approved as a dog care facility kennel.
Okay. Why just can't, from the get-go, can't you just have a separate dumpster automatically to avoid any problems at all? Have to worry about someone calling and complaining, just have a separate dumpster, keep it locked only for that facility?
Mr. Mayor?
Assuming there's going to be a problem.
I was just going to note, this is a public comment, and they're under oath, they need to be making comment, it's not a question and answer. They, they can pose questions if they like, we can bring staff back up, but they need to have their three minutes to make their, make their comments.
All right, so...
That's about it, because everything else is already answered.
All right, thank you. All right, the next card I have is Matt Bauer.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. Considering a few things I need to go over and impact to me, like a little...
State your name.
Oh, Matt Bauer, for the record, with Edward Jones. Requesting a little bit of latitude on the timeframe.
Just do three minutes, and then we'll go from there.
A few things I want to address, just put things in perspective. I'm going to try to put this up on the screen for you to see. All right, so where my finger is here, that is the wall adjacent to my office. In my office, I have myself, branch office administrator, and another financial advisor, Valerie Latour, that this impacts, their kennel runs the whole length. Just because of the way our office is built, we run the length of the building from front to rear, not left to right, okay? So all of our offices literally are on that door. From a noise perspect, excuse me, noise perspective, put this in context, when they were already working on demolishing what was in there to begin with, it was so loud that we thought that literally they were banging on our wall. So having finally gotten sick and tired of hearing the noise, I went to go see what they were doing and asked them to come back at a different time, what have you, I learned that they were actually on the far end of the building. So while they're just demolishing, again, it was so loud, further, we were actually the last to complain to the property manager. The people at the far end, including Chase Bank, were the ones who complained before we did. Kind of gives you an idea of how thin these walls are. In our lease, we have a right to enjoyment of a quiet environment. That is written in the lease. This property I hear is potentially being bought by another company who actually reached out to us to ask us how we felt about a doggy daycare. For those who know me on this board already, you know that there's probably very few, if any, people in here that loves dogs more than me, okay? That's not the issue. The issue is that, at the end of the day, what I do, what my staff does, and what my colleague does, we handle millions and millions of dollars for our clients. So what we do on a daily basis, I don't know, I didn't realize your ordinance applied to indoors, I thought it applied to outdoors, but there's not a single instance where I need to be listening to a single ounce of a dog barking. It can come on, come off, whatever. I have to call the police, ask them to come in, check. Now this particular dog's gone or not barking and sleeping at the time. Well, there's nothing to measure. So the other problem I have is, in the planning commission, I thought they got it right in terms of coming back to you, there was supposed to be a report from an expert. In your agenda packet and in my request, I have found no report. I found a noise mitigation plan, which says some really neat stuff. It's actually, I don't know, it sounds cool, it sounds neat, I don't know if it's going to work. And I don't think anybody on this board can say whatever they plan on doing is going to work. I have seen no expert opinion in terms of what they plan to do, how it's going to work, and why. So what I'm trying to avoid, at the end of the day, is an issue coming up where my business is disturbed. I've been in there almost five years now, I'm the second oldest tenant in that building next to Chase. I just can't see this happening if that's the case. So I know they want to work with me, from what they said, the only thing I've heard from them is through another colleague who has a friend, who is friends with them, calling me to say, oh, these people are really nice people. I'm sure they are. But they haven't come to see me, they haven't called me, they haven't come to ask me to come look at anything, haven't done anything. So today, and I'm pro-business, so it's not that this can't work, I don't know if it can or it can't, but I think today, unfortunately, it's premature because you and I have no information as to how this noise abatement is going to not just reduce, not just minimize, but completely remove noise. That's the standard in our lease, that should standard for me, and I think that'd be the standard for anybody who had something like this going in next to them. I think their idea, I think their business has a lot of great promise. Heck, I was the one rooting for them in terms of neighbors, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of noise outside that, personally.
So I think we got the point from you.
Okay, sorry. I will tend to ramble a little bit.
Question over. Yeah, so...
What is it you're proposing then?
My proposal would be, I would like to see what an expert is saying of what should be done to completely remove any noise. Like, for instance, I know, I'm the, just...
Are there experts out there like that?
Yeah.
I don't know. That's not my problem.
Again, we're getting into questions, I know.
Well, he's, yeah.
Yeah, but...
I don't see anything about a wall going up to the ceiling. I can tell you, anything going into the ceilings is echoing through.
Too, attendant, their landlord issue, so...
No, that's, this is...
And that's my other problem is...
Right, what I'm saying, if they'll...
I've got to go through landlord, then I got to go through the city. I'm just trying to avoid this before we even get there. Sir?
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, we have a resolution that's, this is, a resol, adjoining resolution about this, and pages two, three, and four are all about noise in this. It's all about, it's all about noise reduction mitigation, it's all, so you have, there's a document that's, that's attached to this that's all about noise.
Who's the document from, sir?
It's a resolution for the city. What is this? Because it's...
What is that? I'm not sure what that means to me exactly.
Well, resolution is, is official statement.
We're not going to get, we can't get into the debate here, I don't believe, so we've got to just, we've got your comments.
I understand this is a resolution, but I don't see a plan...
We've got your comments, and we appreciate it, and we know the concern, so, thank you.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Myra, any comments you want to make publicly, or?
Regarding the noise mitigation plan, the applicant did give you the name, which I don't have written down, he can give you the name of the contractor who designed the plan for him, but the applicant did write it up himself.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Those were the only two cards we had, but anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment, or public hearing. And Chair will entertain a motion.
Does the applicant have a chance to rebut?
Yeah, the applicant should have an opportunity for rebuttal.
Okay, so does the applicant have any comments on the rebuttal?
Okay, just a couple things I'm going to try and point out, if I may. Regarding dogs being out late at night, our dogs, we, as a general rule of thumb, have everybody in their kennel by six PM. They're out for most of the day, so once we do dinner, our place is as quiet as it gets because the dogs, like you said, there's not an old-style kennel where they're sitting there all day hoping to get out. We give them fresh air, we keep them moving. And then at that point, if they go out at nighttime, since we are there twenty-four-seven, we, we do take them out one by one, one dog by itself, you know, as a general rule of thumb, will there be a barker? Sure, but not, it's not going to be a madhouse, if that makes sense. The other thing we, is this up? Okay, the other thing we tried to do was, from the building next door, we tried to put our indoor facilities as far away from our neighbor as we could, so we helped between that and all the other things that we're attempting to do, that that will really, really cut down on the noise. But like I said, I have no problem reaching out to anybody, like, you know, I'll reach out to Matt myself and make sure he has my number, we're not here to be a pain, so I hope that answers. Oh, regarding trash, we are working with the landlord to have, we have to use the one container that they have now, but we're going to have it picked up multiple times instead of once a week. That's all I've got.
Question?
Thank you. Yes, sir. Minister has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the, that's all right. Noise mitigation?
Yes.
You did that with a third party?
Yep.
And why didn't you submit that with the application?
It must have been a step I missed, I actually did it through Brenham and Construction.
Wouldn't that be pretty important?
Myra said it's in there.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought it was in there.
Oh, I thought she said it was in his words.
I'm not sure.
I, I didn't think she said, I'm sorry, I missed. Myra, did you say there was one attached, or it was in his words?
It's in here.
It's in the packet, but is it, is it a third-party mitigation, noise mitigation?
I wrote it up based upon...
He wrote it up based on a third-party, but there is nothing of a third-party, right? Nothing is in the packet for the third-party?
From a third-party.
From the third-party? Can, can we get that first?
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, before we vote on this?
If that's, yeah, I mean, that's required, yeah. Actually, I brought two more general contractors through yesterday, just to make sure that the plan we had, somebody wasn't blowing smoke, that we knew...
No, I, I mean, that's what, that's what the major issue is here, so it, it would be simple logical to, to ask for that.
That would be something, though, that the majority of the council, obviously, if this was...
Obviously, that's my comment.
Yeah, no, so, yes, Ms. Barnaby?
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz, if I could, and, and thank you, sir.
Yep.
Ms. Schwartz, you showed us information regarding stipulations, and there was one where it said, you know, they're going to do this, and then if there's a problem, they're going to add additional things. Can you pull that up for us, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, my question is, why can't we just require them to have the ceiling tiles, the stuff, why can't we just require this to begin with, and cut to the chase, and make sure that we've, we've done our due diligence and have done everything we can to prevent a problem from happening, rather than have some, you know, do our, do our best, but then something still happens, why don't we just go ahead and require that, that the ceiling tiles and things be hung as, as, as part of the opening stipulations?
You can do that.
My thought being that I, I think the applicant wants to operate a, a good business. I think that they have come in here and said that they don't want to cause anyone any issues, and if, it may, it may be overkill, but I would much rather have that done and know that we required everything that we could do on our part to make sure that there isn't a problem. And then if we do have another issue, we'll have to go a little bit further. But it's, it seems to me, some, some of the, the buildings that we have, you can put things along the side, but if it goes up into the crawl space, the ceiling space, and then goes everywhere, that's going to be a problem. So maybe require acoustical panels to be put in as part of the, the original, or adding to the stipulation, so that we know it's done, and so there shouldn't be an issue.
You can do that, if that's what you wish.
I'd still like to see the, the sound, the third-party sound mitigation before, if that's possible. And I, I know, I'm familiar with sound studios, and you can have the AC/DC playing, you can't hear them outside, but that's expensive, very expensive to do that, and I don't think that they're willing to probably go that far, because, but outside is, is my biggest concern. And we got a landlord, a financial services land, or tenant, neighbor that, and that that's not, says that has been contacted, and that would have been part of the stuff I would have recommended before today.
All right, any other comments? All right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
What's the timeline on, on the start from the owner? I mean, what's, what's your, I know you want it like today, but are you talking about, I mean, this is holidays, are you prepared to open January, February, when?
April, May.
April, May?
With the new wall that we had to add, we had to go back to the architect to change the plans, so we haven't even submitted plans yet.
So you're quite a ways out.
Yeah, I mean...
So there's nothing, no reason why we can't take this up in January?
It would be, I mean, we started paying rent, that's how, how...
Oh, I know you want it, I, I agree with you, I'd be, I'm busy.
There is one beauty of our business, though, it's like getting your kids to a daycare, getting a pet or owner, like, when you said you took your pets to Bayside, getting a parent to trust you and get them, this is not a business that's going to come out of their gate in April and will be thirty percent capacity. So we're going to have a nice three or four month before it even starts building up, that we'll know if these mitigation things are working, or we'll know we'll have time to get it before, you know, the big days are, which are Thanksgiving and Christmas, those holiday seasons. So it's kind of a, not a test run, but we know what we're getting into, and, you know, we know what we're up against, but we also know that the first two months will be ten dogs for eight weeks. I mean, it's, you lose a lot early.
Mr. Roth?
I, I, I believe you said that the dogs are out in the daytime.
Correct.
So, and Mr. Bauer was concerned about his noise on the wall next to him, the kennels.
Yep.
So it sounded like while he's at work, the dogs are going to be out in the outside area.
You're correct.
And then, and then nine to five, the dogs will come over when he's, his staff is, it, it sounds like...
Our hours are almost perfect. Our busiest time are the weekends.
Yeah.
Which they're mostly not there, and like you said, the wall they were even talking about, closest to them, that, you know, most people won't believe, but that, when you're at capacity, it's limited, so the row closest to them will be the least one used, and those pets won't be in there until six PM, and when they open, we're already out at eight AM. So our hours, almost get lucky that we coincide with them.
And, and you seem to have noise mitigation heavily covered here, so I, I, you know, and, and realizing that there's a noise ordinance.
Correct.
If there's a problem, there's going to be a problem to you, so...
Yeah, it shows you guys have ultimate power just to shut us down, and, you know, we're not, like I said, we're not in for that, because this is a big investment.
All right.
So what's the pleasure, motion?
Do you need a motion? Move to approve SU 21 dot 3731?
I'll second it with the stipulation that there be some type of ceiling tile or baffle.
We'll put those tiles in, yeah, those aren't a heavy add-on, so we're doing a drop ceiling.
Rather than wait to see we're gonna have a problem, I'd rather do that now. So I'll second it if that stipulation is accepted with the maker of motion.
Can I add a stipulation for the sound mitigation first?
Yes, say.
I'm asking.
Well, it'd be Mr. Roth's motion, right?
What were you?
Sound, a, a, a third-party sound mitigation report, he probably already has it.
Okay.
That was, that was basically his email, I sent it to him in the plan, I just, I put it in there because I didn't know.
I'd just like to see it.
I can forward that email to.
You can add that, because I believe it's already in here.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but that's.
Any paperwork he has forward to the planning department?
Yeah, I can do that.
From the third-party, not, not in your words.
Yeah, no, for sure, yeah.
All right, Ms. Barnaby?
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing.
So those are all stipulations that are agreed upon?
Yeah.
So is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand what the third stipulation is, that they provide a copy of their sound mitigation analysis to the planning department in advance of.
Yes.
applying for permits.
And, and it's in compliance with.
What's represented?
What's represented.
I see, okay.
Okay, that's good. All right?
Yeah.
All right, so any further discussion?
No.
All right, seeing none, we'll start the vote in Ward two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Gary's approved, five to zero, thank you.
Well, I hope we don't have a fire.
I do too.
And here we'd be safe.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mayor, I know what a pleasure council is, I know we have a lot of folks here for Chief Edwards and Chief Gare, I have a matter that'll probably take about five minutes that's on the agenda as relates to the recommendation of Ms. Taylor.
Okay.
If you'd like me to clear that one first. Basically pursuant to the provisions of the city charter that require council approval of department directors, I forwarded a transmittal letter, I believe it's dated December 7th, recommending Ms. Nilsa Taylor as the head of the Administrative Services Department. As you may remember, ASD, as we realigned it within the SCIR city budget in pursuant to formal action, included information technology, human resources, utility billing, procurement, and community outreach. So that's the scope of the division itself. I know that Ms. Taylor went around and talked with the counselors and provided courtesy interviews to each and every one of you so that you, we could professionally present her qualifications to you. I feel really good about this recommendation to the extent of, Nilsa has the bandwidth, she has the administrative management experience, she had been in Connecticut in the HR world for about 20-plus years and then came to us, been with us five or six years, done a really good job, she has a passion for, for the city, the work the city has done, and a philosophy about, it's a remodel job a little bit about what we're doing. It's not a type of position, when I interview candidates, I tell them, this isn't a situation where you're getting a turnkey, beautiful home, we're, we're in the process of trying to remodel it so it's beautiful for the future, but I need your help to understand, it's a remodel job. And, and Ms. Taylor understands that. And she's got a great management style and fit and personality, and that's probably one of the most important things, that she works well with others, and she's constructive and professional and everything else. And she's put together a great staff who's here with us today at, at the HR department currently, and I feel really, really confident and have no doubt in this recommendation that she's gonna be able to do a job. So with that, I'm proud to present Ms. Taylor for consideration as Administrative Services Director.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'd like to move for approval of the appointment of Nilsa Taylor to the Administrative Services Director.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second?
And a third.
A third, and a fourth, and a fifth. And any further discussion or comments?
Do you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
You're not approved yet, so be careful what you say.
Oh, boy. Good morning, Mayor, good morning, City Council. I'm grateful for the opportunity and I'm excited for what lies ahead. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Perry, for your support during the process. I am truly honored. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hearing no further discussion, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
And two.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. The next matter before you is, is basically the retirement of Chief Edwards and, of course, the, the appointment of incoming Chief Tim Gare to Bradenton's Fire Department. And with us today, as you can see in the back of the room, are some of the great firefighter professionals from our department as well as across the county and otherwise, and emergency service and the like, and it's great that they could join us for, for this, thank you, and transition of, of a position. And I just wanna say that Chief's done a great job, I know you guys know him a lot better than I do, and I've enjoyed working with him, his staff is great, the department overall, just an awesome, awesome department that I think takes a lot of pride in their work and makes sure that they, that they're there to do the job and they get the job done. That, that problem we had with the major fire a couple of weeks back was a pretty good example of that, quite honestly. And so, looking forward to, to the future and what, what Chief Gare will bring us, but we also have to honor the past, and with that, I wanna express my thank you to Chief Chuck Edwards and welcome him to, congratulate him, I should say, for his retirement, and that's what we're here to do.
All right, Chief?
Appreciate that, Administrator Perry, so we're all facing changes and, and we as at our department, at your fire department, we have even more. So, we're happy to honor Fire Chief Chuck Edwards today and his 33, over 33 years of service to this city and to the community. He's kind of a homegrown, homegrown guy, been here his whole life, a lot of family roots, and we appreciate the time to, to make this happen. Chief, I wanna make sure you come up here while I'm talking about you. And, and we've got all, we've got family, friends, retirees, you know, our work family that's here, and I, I can't say enough about Chief and where, you know, where he's brought us, you know, in his years as the fire chief and even before. You're looking at a guy that's run thousands of calls, you know, even when he came up through the ranks as paid DMT, like some of our other personnel, then lieutenant, captain, battalion, on up, as even as my battalion chief, mitigating many fires and incidents like we had a couple of weeks ago, and, and I can't say enough about him and, you know, his drive for safety and making sure we all went home the next day. And that's so important to all of us, and then the changes we faced in the department through the years, he's been right there and, and been in the lead and, and been an example in the community, always strived to, for a good name, and, and that was always stressed to us, is try to keep a good name for yourself and for the department and the city. So I really gotta commend him for that, and, you know, and I'm honored to ask him to pin my badge when it's appropriate time today. We talked about a badge-pinning ceremony, and we wanted to make sure we had all our personnel that were available here. So we do have city coverage by other fire departments, waiting calls, just for your information, so, you know, we try to make sure we plan ahead. But that being said, I'll, I'll, I'll wait to turn it over to Chief, he's gonna have to stand here and listen for a minute. We've got a couple of visitors here, Fire Chief Lee Whitehurst from East Manatee Fire Rescue, and then also Stacy Bailey from Parish Fire District, and they're both here to speak and make a presentation to Chief Edwards.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's my first time here to speak to you, which I appreciate that privilege. I'm actually here as the sitting president of the Manatee County Fire Chiefs Association, I met Chuck back in the, in the 90s, when he was one of the blue shirts, sitting back here, and we had a hydraulics class in the old fire station, before we tore it down and built the new one. You know, Chuck was always a quiet guy, still is. But when he did speak, you know, he had that low, sexy, grovly voice. I mean, look at him, he's straight out of GQ magazine, right? So even in his quietness, he, he still got your attention by being quiet, that's a skill. But when he spoke, people listened. Some 15 years later, in 2005, he was tapped to become the deputy chief here by former Chief Mark Souders, the late Chief Souders, and at the same time, he became a county fire coordinator. And that's when I really started to work with, with Chuck as a fellow county fire coordinator and another deputy chief in the county. And we'd talk to each other, compare notes, what, how are you doing this, how are you doing that? And we all do that today, still do. We'd go to some of the conferences together, or at the same time, we didn't drive there, but we were there at the same time, and, and since he is homegrown from Bradenton, as I am, we'd see each other about town. When I remarried in, in 2010, my wife and Dana kinda hit it off, so we really did enjoy each other's company, both professionally and personally, and have for, for quite a long time. Chuck became the vice president of our Chiefs Association and then the president, and I was the secretary of treasurer at the time, so we really worked close together, I had to pay all the bills that he was spending money on. And of course, Chuck has been a big part of the 9/11 committee. He's been that liaison back to the city, to the mayor's office, year after year after year. In particular, the, the 20-year anniversary, mayor spoke there. But Chuck's been that person to make sure the tent's set up, and, and he had help, but he, he was that lead guy. Probably his leadership, as far as I can tell, stood out the most when Chief Souders passed, and his deputy chief, with his quiet leadership, got the department through and, and on where it is today. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I, gives me great pleasure, personal pleasure, to present awkwardly. Can I put it on here? Somebody can see it? Tech guys will take care of it? There we go. Presented to Bradenton Fire Chief Chuck Edwards with our deepest appreciation for your many years of dedication to the fire service of Manatee County, Florida, serving as a member since 2005, vice president in 2013, president in 2014, I skipped the fire coordinator up until now, fire coordinator since 2005, and of course, a charter member of our Tribute to Heroes Committee. So, Chuck? I'd like to, if, if I could, introduce the next vice president of our Fire Chiefs Association, Stacy Bailey, who's the chief of the Parish Fire Department, former employee here at the city. There he is. Council members, good morning. What, what a great opportunity and an honor to speak on behalf of Chuck Edwards. A little bit about my history, as my uncle Vernon Horn retired from the city of Braden as chief, so it's a really special honor for me to present thing to Chuck. I get tongue-tied because it's quite emotional. I had quite a bit of experience dealing with, with Chuck, I, I stated at the Fire Chiefs meeting, one of my first shifts at the city of Braden, we had a pretty significant fire, and I was asked to do something that was probably not the safest, and Chuck, to my defense, jumped in and said, hey, this is serious, you know, and, and I always remembered that, that, that quiet guy wasn't so quiet that day, but trust me. But he made it, he made it a point to me that, that stuck with me, and that's, you know, speaking up when it comes time to speak up when there's something awry, and he's done that throughout the Fire Chiefs, and I'm disheartened, so I'd like to show you what we got here. This is, this is from the Manatee County Fire Chiefs Association presents the Career Retirement Award to Chief Charles Chuck W. Edwards III for 33 years of dedication and leadership to the city of Braden Fire Department and to the fire services of Manatee County from October 27, 1988 to December 31, 2020.
We definitely appreciate the two chiefs taking time out of their schedules today as they both had really their most important meetings of the year or today. It's funny how everything fell on this, on this day to try and fit in. Mayor, did you wanna go ahead and present?
Yeah, what I wanna do, though, is, is I wanna have everyone, fire department, come up and we'll face the audience, and get the council in front, and then do what we're gonna do.
Okay, well, at this, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and ask Chief, if he would, I'd be honored if he would pin my badge and go ahead and do that, and I'd like to call my wife and my grandson up.
Yeah, let's do that first. Yeah.
We'll, we'll see how he does.
He's gonna do fine.
Aww.
Liam?
Liam, come on up, bud.
Hey. He's like. How are you? Just real quick, before I pin Tim's badge, I tell you what, this makes it a lot easier for me to leave, knowing that I'm passing it on to somebody like Tim. This is just a great person. If you know Tim, you love Tim. I've watched him through the years and, and his rapport with, with personnel and how he handles himself, his decision-making, it's, it's, what a great guy. I, I, it's just, you know, that, that's him. Good family man, great family man, as you see, but we've had some serious talks and I know the department continued to head in the right direction with Tim, so I, yes, I'd like to pin his badge.
Okay. I'm gonna give you a badge. You're hanging on to it. I'm gonna hold it now. Hang on a second. Hang on. 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 All right, so I think if it's all right, at this time, we'll have all the fire personnel and family come up and just kinda get in the bowl here, facing that way, the council will get in front of them.
You guys can start moving around this way, like a semi-circle. Thanks for coming. This is, this is very hard.
If you guys could all move forward a little bit in case for a better frame of the photographs I can. Yeah. Bring it in as tightly as we can, although it's a little uncomfortable. But it's hard to get it right. All right, so just real quick, and I, from the council and the mayor's office, we wanna give Chuck a key to the city because for 33 years, he's been working for this city and the love and obviously being a homegrown Bradenton person like I am, you know, it means a lot that you stayed home, and a lot of kids don't stay home today, but they're coming back, and we're trying to build that city, that if you wanna be here, and I think this council and this group, fire department, everyone in the departments is doing a great job, so Chuck, congratulations on 33 years and enjoy your key to the city. Doesn't get you in anything anymore. Locked out on December 31st.
Chuck a key to the city because for thirty-three years, he's been working for this city and the love and obviously being a, a homegrown Bradenton person like I am, you know, it means a lot that you stayed home. And a lot of kids don't stay home today, but they're coming back and we're trying to build that city that if you wanna be here, and I think this council and this group, Fire Department, everyone in the departments is doing a great job. So, Chuck, congratulations on thirty-three years and enjoy your key to the city. Doesn't get you in anything anymore. Locked out on December thirty-first. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
So, once everybody makes their way back, I just wanna make sure that uniformed personnel and then, once we conclude, we'll do another photo outside by the ladder and the flag.
Chief Edwards, don't, don't leave until I get to say something.
Oh, you did? I got it back to my office and like, what is, what is this?
Yeah. Yeah.
Chief Gier, I wanna go to the council first to give an opportunity. Ms. Barnaby wants to say something?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Chief Edwards, your sister, Robin, was one of my best friends in elementary school and I spent a lot of time at your house when you were the annoying little brother.
Yep.
And I, I feel the need to state that I never thought of you as having a sexy gravelly voice or anything like that.
And, uh...
Cause that kinda would've been creepy.
Yeah.
However, um, you know, your, your father was involved in the community, uh, with, uh, Florida Power, um...
Grandfather was a PD.
Yes.
Police Department.
So, your family has a, a history of service with us. I hope you have a wonderful retirement because I believe you've certainly earned it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I wanna thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, Chuck, I, uh, you know, I was on council when Mark passed way too, way too soon for all of us. It was shocking, unexpected and, uh, you know, we had a choice. We had to, uh, uh, do a jump ball, uh, between you and David and I, I like to think we made the right call. So, I wanna thank you for your service, um, and, uh, you know, good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Ms. Sanders?
Thank you, Chuck. You're, you're probably one of the only departments I never have a conversation with cause you always get it right. So, uh, congratulations and, and, uh, Mr. Gier, you have a big shoes to fill, buddy. I'm telling you. But I'd like to know something. How do you stay so young after thirty-three years? I mean, is that your real hair and, 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 I mean...
You should've seen his dad.
You should've seen his dad?
His, his dad was, uh, not that Chuck isn't, but this is getting into that creepy thing for me right now. But his dad was...
You need to bottle that and sell it or something because I'd be your first customer. Uh, the other thing is, hey, if you're around, I think you need to be a grand marshal of this DeSoto Parade that's coming up. Or if not, ride the fire truck with us. Will you do that?
No.
Okay. Drive the fi- oh, no, get on top, you know?
You get to ride it back.
He likes driving it.
He likes driving it? Well, it'd be your choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, boys. All right.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes.
I, I know because, um, I, I was hoping to see my predecessor, Councilman Gallo, here because, you know, and I don't know that he was feeling well enough to make it, but I know he would wanna, I know how much he cares about you all and is excited for it.
Yeah. I talked to him last night and he wasn't feeling up to it, but we got a chance to talk and I'll, I'll tell you about that. Thank you.
Well, I can't be left out.
I know.
It's been a pleasure. My first year working with you, thank you for getting me through the first year and thank you for leaving us in good hands and all the best in your retirement.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chief. Now, I, and I, I just wanna be able to thank all of you. You guys have been, uh, very supportive with me, uh, throughout my career, um, some before you and everything, but you always treated us well and the department well. You supported us and I know we've asked for a lot probably in the last twelve months and you always came through for us. Um, I appreciate it. Um, Chiefs, uh, our Chief, um, Gallo, uh, I did talk to him last night and, uh, he said he couldn't make it, but, uh, I owe a ton to him. Um, back in nineteen eighty-eight, he, uh, offered me a job, uh, with the city and I tell you what, it was the b- best career choice I could've made. I never, I wasn't, I, I, as a kid, I never really came up thinking I'm gonna be a fireman when I grow up. Um, I had a cousin that worked here, Rick Stevens, that talked me into it and said, you gotta come over and try this, man. This is, this is the greatest gig ever. Um, I applied with the city and ran the agility test and met with, uh, Chief Gallo and I remember his words was, um, be at my, be in my office at, uh, Monday morning and go get a haircut. You know? And, you know, again, that was thirty-three years ago and just one of the best career moves I could've made. Um, just met a lot of really good people, surrounded myself with some really good people and man, when you look at this, this is impressive. This is just good folks, um, trained up hard, love their job. And, um, man, I would, I would compare them against anybody in the county, in the country. It's just, um, a good group of guys and it makes my job easier. And I feel so good about this guy, you guys. I, I know everybody's in good hands with, with Mr. Tim, but again, thanks. I appreciate it. Um, I don't wanna drag this out any, any longer. I know you got things to do, but thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Whenever we adjourn, we're gonna have a, a quick meal and a come and go, uh, meet and greet for, uh, Chief at the fire station, Fire Station One. So, you're all welcome to attend. Thank you very much. Appreciate the time. This is big news. Appreciate it.
So, we have just a little bit more business. Mr. Perry?
Mayor, my final matter is, uh, just for council's, uh, council's preference, there was a matter from the last agenda that dealt with the garage retail space and I think, uh, the, the award of the RFP was tabled at that time and I was just, Mr. Barca is here with us, um, to answer any questions on that and, uh, I don't know if the council wants to re, take that up or not, so...
Does, does the person, uh, just a point of order, it, does the person who tabled it have to request it to be brought up or can anyone else?
Uh, well, the, the table...
No, it could be a motion to take it off the table.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that we, you know, take it up.
Well, it's actually, the, to the person, the person that tabled it has to take it off.
What?
No, anybody can make a motion to take it off the table and that'll be voted on.
So, we have a motion to take off the tabling of the RFP for the parking garage. Is there a second? Or a second?
Uh, yeah.
Second it. Uh, Mr. Roth will second it for discussion. All right.
Did, first off, did everyone get a chance to read the contract? Cause that's why we tabled it.
So, Ms. Barnaby, we had a motion by Ms. Coker, seconded by Mr. Roth for discussion on the RFP for the parking garage.
Has the city attorney read it?
I have, I have not seen it.
Yeah, we were, Miss, Miss... What?
Mr. Mayor, I believe it was the actual contract?
Yeah.
It wasn't the RFP?
What?
Oh, the contract.
Yeah, it's, it's the contract itself, right? Yeah.
Contract. So, Mr. Rudicell didn't get a copy after last, didn't read it? I thought that was...
There was a copy that was handed out at the last meeting, but it was missing every other page. That was, that was the only version I ever saw.
And we sent a corrected copy. Perhaps Scott didn't get the corrected copy. Yeah.
All right. So, then, obviously...
So, we're gonna enter into a contract that our city attorney hasn't had a chance to read.
Yeah. Yep. I, you know, that's, that's on me. I, I had a lot to do with that contract and I can't practice law in the state of Florida, although I did pass the Florida bar and was a member for many years of the Florida bar. If your, your preference is to have a member of the Florida bar pass the, take a look at that contract, that's fine. My revision of it was, was no problems. From a layman's perspective, it's, it's, it's a form contract.
I understand, but we have a city attorney for a reason and it frustrates me when something like this occurs.
I understand. And a copy was, was handed out. And we'll have to get a transmittal letter so that we have a, a system where every document or, or relevant documents will go to the city attorney. Uh, I didn't think this was necessary in my, my, my opinion, but I get it.
And as, as a practicing Realtor, the purpose for these standard forms is so that you don't have to have a lawyer involved. It's already been reviewed and kind of approved by the, by the Florida bar and I, that's the only thing I will say.
Mayor, yes.
And I mean, I would prefer to have it...
Yeah, I have a suggestion. I've heard that we might need to have a special meeting next week, um, from some CRA stuff that we're, that's gonna have to come to this council. So, why don't an abundance of caution, let Mr. Rudicell read through it, give his comments because I thought that was done. I'm, I mean, and we missed that, but, and then we can just have two items on next week's agenda to discuss and make sure it's right. We want it right and full transparency.
So, it's just point of order, um, cause I, I'd always been told, I mean, I, I don't, this is where we had it, but I, I've always been told that when it's tabled, the person that makes the motion to table it has to pull it back off. Is that not true?
Not someone on the prevailing side.
No, it, that would be, um, if there was a motion for reconsideration, it would have to be someone on the prevailing side to make that motion. But on a motion to table, the whole council votes on that.
Okay.
You just have to have a motion to pull it off the table.
Well, and, uh, so...
Ms. Coker, let's, let's get the mo- so, you're, will you pull your motion or do you want it?
So, oh, no. I mean, I'm fine with it, whatever, whatever you wanna say, um, extending it or putting it on the, no, the next, as long as it's on the next agenda.
Right.
I wanna get this thing moved forward.
I, I wanted it moved forward a month ago.
Mm-hmm. We're all in the same place, but we just wanna have a little bit more clarification.
That's fine.
So, and, and I, I, nobody wants this done more than me, um, but I wanna make sure everyone feels comfortable. I know we had a couple of members down there I supported. I blew through the contract because it was standard real estate contract and I, I, I've seen him before.
Right.
So, I, I was comfortable, but I know that there were, uh, Mr. Sanders just had eye surgery, he couldn't see it.
Yeah, no, for sure, last week.
Uh, Ms. Coachman didn't see it, so, so, but, but, but I, but we are having a special meeting. If city attorney hasn't, but I, I, I want this done. I wanna get this, I wanna get this retail spot.
So, is it a move to, um, table or a move to just...
If you withdraw your motion, it's nothing right now.
Okay. I'll withdraw my motion.
Withdraw a second, obviously, cause there is no motion.
Yeah.
So, we will, you know, like I said, I've, we're gonna be having that next week at some point. Once I think, I believe that's the case.
Work on purpose, yep.
Yes, so, all right. So, um, we can do two items and be done with it.
I would just ask if council has any questions prior to, or if Mr. Rudicell has any questions or if anyone else has any questions with standing to ask questions, please get our questions in so we can address it at the next meeting. I apologize for that snafu and I wish I knew that, I did get notice, um, that we had sent out a copy that had every other missing page and I sent it out right away afterwards, corrected. Unfortunately, I didn't think about Mr. Rudicell. I figured he had a copy, but didn't put that together. So, hopefully we can address it next meeting, but it's certainly, uh, within, within your discretion and however you all wanna handle it. Um, and with that, I conclude my business and I wish you all a Merry Christmas.
One quick question. I see James here from Kimley Horn.
Yep.
Was there some discussion?
I didn't have, perhaps, Mr. McClellan or Ja- James, I don't know if you wanna address something?
Well, I think as we had discussed at the last...
Yeah, please. At the last meeting, the council's wish was to have Kimley Horn give an update. Uh, so, James had prepared an update of where they're at with current project as well as the additional phases and just an opportunity for...
Now's the time to do that. I appreciate you sitting through the whole thing.
Absolutely. My pleasure. I'll, I'll be brief. I know it's been a long meeting. Um, just a quick update since we met, uh, two weeks ago when it was requested that I come back and, and give periodic updates. Last time that we met was on December third. That afternoon, we received some additional comments from the SWF mud, um, department regarding the submerged land lease. Uh, comments were received that afternoon. Um, our surveyor and us updated documents and resubmitted to them back on, on December seventh. We followed up on December twelfth, again, on the thirteenth. We had not received additional response as of yesterday, but we're continuing to coordinate with them and plan to reach out to them again today to see if they need additional information. If you recall, we're waiting on two permits, SWF mud, for the submerged land lease for the boardwalk. Once that is approved, then that goes, goes to the COR for their review. Um, last, excuse me, last time I was here, I touched on the lawsuit that was holding up some of the reviews, um, with the COR. The COR, I don't think the lawsuit has ended, but the COR has been given direction on how to proceed. So, once they receive the, um, submerged land lease from SWF mud, they should be able to process the permit. The timeframe that we've received from that reviewer for that processing is pro- is approximately one to three weeks, okay? Um, with SWF mud, we think that we're very close. We've heard several times that it's a couple of weeks out, going back now three or four weeks. So, uh, that's why we're trying to stay in constant communication with them. Regarding, uh, construction documents for phases two B and C, um, when I was here last, we had just submitted, um, preliminary plans, uh, to the city for initial comments. We addressed those last week and those plans were submitted back to the city on, excuse me, um, uh, December twelfth, as well as SWF mud on December twelfth, um, for permit processing. Um, we're continuing to progress design on other fronts while those are in review. In addition, NDC is coordinating with the Observation Tower Builder to get the design build contract going for that. We're expecting preliminary pricing from NDC in mid-January. Uh, we received a request through council or through Jim from the council to proceed now with, um, a proposal for the, um, phase three down sixth, Manatee and then back up ninth, and we're working on that, getting, uh, contracts from our subconsultants and then we'll present that back to the city. With that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions?
All right.
How often are you meeting with, uh, are you meeting weekly now with, uh, Jim?
We meet, we've been meeting weekly, um, for several months. We meet on Monday mornings on the site. Uh, we also have a monthly official OAC meeting that we conduct at NDC's office. So, we're meeting five times a month.
Can I be invited, one of them?
You're welcome to come to any of them, yes. Uh, Monday mornings, we meet at eight-thirty. Um, I think it's the third Thursday of the month that we have our OAC meeting at NDC's I think it's the third Thursday of the month that we have our OAC meeting at NDC's, and that's at 9:00.
I just want to take more time to put details, because it's, I got a lot of questions.
Okay. I'm also happy to comment, if there's any one-on-one sessions that I can facilitate, I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
And just for council's verification, I think over the last couple of weeks since James has been here, and NDC was present too, that there's been a lot better coordination of efforts and attention. And that's not to say that there wasn't attention being paid earlier, but we're looking at concepts that we talked about as far as, while things aren't going on because they're caught up in a delay, whether it's supply chain, or regulatory, or lawsuits, or whatever it is, there's other things we could be doing, so like the Observation Tower. We're trying to get specs for that so that we can do the pricing, NDC can do the pricing, the public can see some development of the project. I think that was the undertone of the meeting. And I know Jim's been meeting a lot with Kimley's folks, and James, and their people, and looking at different options to expedite some of those things, where we actually foresee a possible delay that might deal with an alignment or another different issue, and is there another way to work around this? So these guys are doing a good job, and they're working, Kimley's working with us, and I think we all understood the gist of the feedback from council last time. We'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, James, for waiting the whole meeting. I mean, maybe next time, if that's the case, we can get you in a little earlier.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, James.
So thank you. All right, any other unfinished business?
Nothing from the administrator.
All right, council reports, we start in Ward Two?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Saturday night, we had Winter Wonderland, and the Herald Tribune did some wonderful pictures for us that was in the paper on, which day was this? On Monday. Also want to thank the Bradenton Herald for their publicity prior to the event. I appreciate that very, very much. It was so neat to see again. And I have to thank all of the city departments that provided support to the event, Bradenton Police Department, Bradenton Fire Department, Public Works, and our IT department. Everybody pulled together and provided the support that we needed to make this event happen. I also want to thank the Manatee High School JROTC cadets, who operated the Snow Mountains as the ski patrol, and Sergeant Major Tom Zock with them was there as well, supervising and helping with the event. Want to thank Realized Bradenton for all of their support and help with graphics prior to the event, as well as letting us borrow their canopy so that we could have an area where our information, not only with Realized Bradenton, but other information with the city, could be provided. Need to thank Westminster Point Pleasant, Barbara Barlow and David Niels for our Zoom call with Santa. I think it worked pretty well, and I haven't heard anybody say that they weren't able to get their Christmas wishes made known at that point. Want to thank Manatee Educational Television for providing us the audio equipment, microphones, speakers, things like that with the stage performances. And they are, they were at the event the entire time. They were taking, they were taping the performances, but they were also going and taping the different activities that we had. And they're going to be putting a program together, and it will be on M E TV's channel, as well as they will post it to YouTube, so that you would be able to, to look at that and see, if you weren't able to attend, what the activities were. With the people on the stage, I would love to thank Marvelous Mary that helped start us off with some Christmas songs, and then the dancers from Manatee School for the Arts, Ms. Burnett, Ms. Hillman, Ms. Katrin, I'm going to say her name, Katrin Al, I said it wrong, and Ms. Cardy for coming down and bringing the dancers. Want to thank Dell Couch with the Couch Music Education Foundation, bringing some wonderful singers down, as well as the directors, Beth and Ron Ox, from the Community Christian School, for bringing in the handbell, something that we'd never had, a handbell choir, as well as the choir that was there. And they helped us express to the entire crowd that was there when we all got up on stage and were able to sing "We Wish You a Merry Christmas." That was nice to have those wonderful young voices behind us propping us up. Want to thank the sponsors, City of Bradenton Community Redevelopment Agency. Thank you for your support and for sponsoring the Snow Mountains. Blaylock Walters Attorneys at Law for sponsoring the photo opportunity. Fred's Tents and Canopies, they are new members to our community, and they donated all of the banners, as well as the stage curtain that we had. Again, Westminster Point Pleasant, Florida Sun Coast Real Estate for helping sponsor it, Heinz Law for helping sponsor it, and then Minnesota Commercial Construction for providing the bunny slope for the little kids to go down. And I would be remiss in not thanking everyone up here for all of their support and encouragement to do this event again. And I have been asked by the community to ask you if you want to see the event again. So I need to know.
Yes.
Yes.
Definitely.
Bigger and better.
Well.
Winter Wonderland 2.0.
Yeah.
If you all are willing to continue to provide the support that you did this year, I think that we will get a full community committee together and start looking at some additional things that we might be able to do. I've always wanted to have a marshmallow roasting area and cookies.
All the fire people.
Notice, I waited to bring that up after they left. As well as maybe a gingerbread contest, or cookie decorating for people, and just to come up with some, some new different ideas that we could add to the event. But I didn't want to assume that I could go forward with this without asking your, for your support and your permission.
Should we ask for your bill this year first?
Uh, no.
Just joking.
I'm, I'm not submitting a bill for anything.
Yeah, you're going to hold that one back.
Oh, no. All right, and just from my standpoint, Ms. Barnaby, I know that's something that has been around, obviously, pre a lot of things, but thank you very much, and I think that the sentiment for everyone that was there was excited. And as we grow our, our business district, as well as the overall, just not the Main Street, but overall business in our urban core, I think you're going to find that there's going to be a lot of support, and we'll be able to hopefully get some people that will take sections of that off of you, so you don't have to worry, you can be involved with it. But I've just heard so many people, how can we help? How can we help? And that's where, then it's, it's a community event, not as much of, you know, we, we want this to be the public event, not a city event, as much as it is. But thank you for what you do and did, and you seem a little less stressed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I will admit to waking up Saturday morning at four in the morning with heart palpitations, thinking, what have I forgotten? Because I'd thrown everything away, and what did I forget to do?
Thank both of your boys and their families, and also, obviously, Mark. I saw Mark walking around with a tape roll, trying to tape up the extension cords to be safe, so.
Well, I want, he, he's always done that, because you know, nobody understands liability quite like an attorney does. So again, to my family, that my, my son and our daughter-in-law, we'd come from Texas to see the event, and all of the help that they give, and I wasn't joking when I said that, they said they hadn't had a hot meal since Thanksgiving. There was a lot of takeout and a lot of, of order in kind of thing during getting this together at the end. But thank you all. It was a blessing to do.
Thank you. All right?
Oh, and Merry Christmas, everybody, and Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Kwanzaa.
Mr. Off.
Real briefly, the Ballard Park home sites, the third house was brought in on a Monday, and they were topping the roof off by Wednesday. So those modular homes are really, they're pretty cool. And, and the beauty of that is that, that neighborhood didn't have to hear hammers banging for 18 months while a house was being constructed. So it's, it's pretty slick, and that, and that whole area is turning around. We talked about it earlier, that, you know, this, this project, you know, the Neil Park acquisition, is really, really showing signs of lifting that neighborhood up, just with, with about a third of the homes in already. It's really, it's really noticeably different. So anyway, beyond that, Merry Christmas to everyone here. God bless all our employees and staff and, and everything. Merry, Merry, Merry Christmas. I hope you all enjoy your family and, and have many blessings.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Mary Ann, for your wonderful event. There were thousands of people there. You were a little concerned, but I tell you what, it's pretty good for a remake after a long period of time, because I know how events are to organize, and it's tough, and nobody appreciates it, because nobody knows who you are that's doing that behind the scenes, unless you come up here and tell us that. But, so, it's, it's a lot of work, and it was very successful, so I absolutely support that, and whatever you do, let me know if I can help you. Other than that, I'd like to go congratulate the fire chief and, and wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and for a better year next year.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Ms. Coachman?
Thank you. Of course, I have some things that might take us a little out of the spirit. Today was my first time pulling something off a consent agenda, and it was only because I really was a little confused, and I wanted clarification, because I thought it was something that had not already come to the CRA, but it had, I guess, at some point. And that's what we were doing, we were voting on it. And I understand that process, so I just want you to know that. And I wanted, we had someone from the community to come up and talk about crime. And I live in that neighborhood. I live there. I've, I've talked about it a lot to, you know, the chief, and they're well aware. And unfortunately, to be honest, I, I think our police department is understaffed, and, you know, but that's a whole nother story. But it was good to see someone out of the community come up and speak to that, because that is extremely serious in that, in that box area. So it was good to see, you know, see someone take the time, because that's something that people, and you often hear me say, they feel neglected, and they sometimes don't feel like it's important. Or it is important, but they're not heard. So it was great to have that, that community member come up. Reports from boards, this is something I've kind of wanted to bring up earlier, and we did hear from, we did get the update about Riverwalk. I think it's important that maybe we should have all the boards that work for us, work for the city, you know, the planning commission, who are, we should see their minutes, and we should get a monthly report from them. The Housing Authority especially. I know we're not necessarily the people they have to answer to, but we have to answer to a lot of their citizens, their residents. So I think it would be nice if they could also come before us and present, you know, some updates on what's going on, and how they're handling some of the problems that we constantly hear, at least I constantly hear. But to get on the more positive thing, the weekend, December 11th, was an extremely busy day. I started out with going to the farmer's market. The NAACP has started sponsoring a monthly farmer's market. I think they're going to do it every second Saturday, and there's not the intent to conflict with anything else going on. It's just saying that, hey, Bradenton, you can go east, you can go west, and there's something to do. And I really enjoyed it. There was a 15-year-old entrepreneur there, and I'm, I'll have to get her name to bring it, to report her name here openly, but I don't, I can't remember right now. But she makes the best red velvet cookies and cupcakes, and she's awesome. She's, she's going to go somewhere. She's going to have her own bakery franchise or whatever before you know it. But it was a great thing. I did not get a chance to go to the toy drive, so thank you, BPD, for having the Amazon option. So I did that, and hopefully, things were delivered as they said. So it was just a busy day. It was so much going on, and it was beautiful. Went to Wonderland, Mary Ann, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Barnaby.
Pamela Needy, it's okay.
I thoroughly enjoyed it. Just being there put me more in the spirit, and I look forward to that annually. I really do. It was, it was wonderful to be in the Wonderland on Saturday. And lastly, happy holidays to everyone. Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa. Hanukkah is over?
I think it's technically over, but.
Technically, but still.
We had a meeting in December.
But, 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 but you're still in that holiday spirit, you know, and just all the best to everyone, all our employees, everybody that makes this work, M E TV, everybody, just happy holidays, and let's have fun. Oh, and there's more to do in '22.
Good saying. Ms. Cochrane?
I'll keep it brief, but I'll just reiterate, thank you, Mary Ann. I had counsel in Barbary. I had my grandsons there, and my granddaughter, and it was, it was a great fun, fun, family event, so I'm anxious for next year to see it. And I want to thank BPD. Had a great time honoring the badge and shopping with the kids at Walmart this past weekend. So thank you for inviting me to, that was, that's always a highlight every year, that's, I did it last year as well, and the toy drive as well. So thank you for all you do, and I would like to just encourage everyone, this is the spirit of giving during the holidays. You get, you know, we're giving a lot, and so it's nice to be able to return back. And so I've been, you know, between everything we've got going on, and I've been ringing, whether it's ringing bells at Publix, or, you know, volunteering at a food pantry or something like that, I would encourage everyone to get out there, because I think it'll, it really puts you right in the spirit. So happy holidays to everybody, and that's it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, before you close us out, I just, I wanted to let you know, everybody, I've received a lot of comments from employees thanking you for the $25 gift certificates from Publix, and Gloria and Tamara put them together, and we had defective envelopes, so it took like about three minutes. Hard to put them in the envelope. It was crazy, yeah. Yeah, but, but everybody really appreciate that, as well as me personally, and I appreciate their help in doing it.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Obviously, we've talked about Ms. Barnaby and the Wonderland off the charts. I think that we approved today on the consent agenda for the New Year's Eve party that the group's putting together. I mean, that's been kind of a late thing. I appreciate all the people that have been involved in getting that through, you know, where it's important to our city to continue the growth of what we've done.
Still has to be approved by the county.
Right, right, by the CRA, but it was approved on this agenda today to go forward. And I think that's, that's kind of what we're all doing up here, is how we make things happen. And sometimes, it's not a matter of just saying no, because there's a little bit of a deadline. How do you make it work? Because the citizens want that. We saw how great Winter Wonderland was. Hopefully, that, you know, obviously, the New Year's ball drop is different. We're hoping to have a New Year's manatee drop next year with the county and different things somehow figured out with, you know.
Not a live one. Not a live one, okay.
The manatee will figure out something.
Everybody take PETA off high alert right now, okay?
It's the symbolic manatee that will, will go and celebrate our town. I'd like to congratulate Commissioner Van Austinbridge for being elected chair of the county commission yesterday for next year, so obviously, and his district is now is downtown, the way the districts change. So, you know, you always like to have people in leadership to get more stuff done, and if other people are helping us get through that, we want to do it. And just Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Holidays, and again, we have the greatest staff, I think, in any city, and we're going to keep saying, working through that. And I know we're improving every day, a lot of changes this year, but we're very proud of what we've, we've accomplished as a group, and continue to work through, and just keep things going. On, is there any other staff situation? Jim, do you have anything that?
CRM.
Yeah, yeah, he's got, we'll finish if they.
One, I just wanted to let you all know that the Public Works is having its annual holiday barbecue tomorrow, starting at 11:30, and you're all invited to come over. We're having it catered with box lunches, so there's no serving necessarily required, so hopefully, it will flow along smoothly. And separately, on Saturday, this Saturday, we'll be doing another pre-Christmas citywide yard waste cleanup. So hopefully, we'll be able to, with yard waste being next week, and it being a short week, hopefully, we can get a, get ahead of it with that collection.
Just in time for the trees to go off.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
Station three. We were going to be in by Thanksgiving.
Oh, I didn't say what year, though, did I?
No, you didn't.
So we had a, we had a progress meeting with the, with the contractor yesterday. They won't be in by Thanksgiving, they won't be in by Christmas. It's now looking as if we'd be mid-January. There's, there's a couple of items that, long lead items on, on equipment, something as simple as the kitchen hood for the kitchen is another month out before it comes in. Everything's all framed up, ready for it to be just plopped in, but no hood. So hopefully, we'll have a little bit better handle. The interior is progressing. Cabinetry is in place. Toilets are being installed, showers are prepared. They had, one of them, one of the items was, there's a rubberized flooring that goes in the exercise room. The flooring is there, the contractor has disappeared. Now, they, they tell me that they found somebody that will be there tomorrow to start installing it, but that's just the kind of thing that, that's been happening on this, that it's crazy.
Well, if it's all interior, can they at least take down all the fencing and get the site and landscaping done?
We had that conversation with them yesterday, that there's site landscaping that still needs to be done. The contractor for that has been saying, hey, I want this done before I show up, and we said, it's time for you to crack the whip and get their butts out here to finish this up, because that's, that's obviously part of it. So hopefully, we'll have some movement on that here this, this coming week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Josh?
So I had, I thought maybe some firefighters would say, I had all kinds of jokes prepared, and now you're not the audience to hear. Regardless, a point of clarification from what I said earlier, March 2nd is the next Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, if you want to make note of that. Thank you for the thank yous about our events this weekend. Obviously, it was a great event downtown. Thank you for inviting us to be such a big part of it. But the toy drive to benefit Hope Family Services. But the toy drive to Benefit Hope Family Services, we hope is as successful as last year. Seems like we got more cash donations, but we were getting, today, I was watching 10 Amazon boxes roll by as I was walking in the door, so I'm-
Three of them were mine.
Okay, good. But it's really a great benefit for Hope. Then moving into, and Braden Blue's Foundation is such a big part of that. Moving into Monday was the Honoring the Badge event, Kingdom Life Church with Pastor Don Storiano, who was here. He and Chief Raz started it so many years ago, but it is continuing and getting bigger and bigger. Our big sponsors for that, Walmart gives a $5,000 grant, which really almost funds it. Cox Chevrolet, big sponsor. Just Jewelers, big sponsor. Braden Blue Foundation, obviously, is heavily involved. Thank you to, you and I got to walk around with Alejandro and-
Oh. I'm kind of mushed right now.
We got to walk around and help them shop. It was, just, it's so heartwarming to help out, as you were talking about giving this time of year. Helped over 125 kids, and I know you all were able to walk through and help even more, you and your family, so we appreciate that. And one more thing, if you could turn this on, I'll get this very exciting stuff off here. That is our Christmas card from our CRA officers, and on the back, it has their names, assignments, and their phone numbers. But we always, Santa was here, I think you guys got to meet Santa a few weeks ago, if I'm not mistaken. He was here a few weeks back, and that's them all posed out there. People can't see Maverick, he's actually just sort of right next to you.
Oh, yeah, I can see him there.
Anyway. Merry Christmas to all of you, Happy New Year, and I will see you soon enough.
Thank you. Chief? Anything else? Nelson, you have a big report? Welcome aboard. And thanks to everyone, and I know that everyone in this room, obviously, is, is very important to what we do in the city, and we appreciate that. Anything else, Mr. Perry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rudicel? Only thing, Mr. Rudicel, maybe we do actually own a piece of property on Manatee Avenue officially, and for Fire Station Two. So a little bit of logistics happened with that at the last minute, but it worked out, and-
Correct. We did, we did close on the-
Close on that, right.
-property for Fire Station Two.
Fire Station Two, so, but thank you very much, and hearing nothing else.
What, 50, 50 minutes?
Oh, yeah, the 50, the CRA, Mr. Roth, wanted me to remind everybody, 1:15 for a CRA meeting coming forward, so be a slight break. Anything else for the good of the order? And I think Tamara has a song going out. We'll be adjourned.
Walk out.
Walk out.